Hear ye, hear ye, hear ye. This city council meeting will start in ten seconds. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This meeting of your Pontiac City Council is hereby called to order. Six o'clock PM for this evening's meeting. It is Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024. We now give the Florida Councilman Parker to introduce this evening's invocation.
Thank you, brother president. Good afternoon, everyone. I hope you've had a good day. This evening, we will have our invocation given to us by Minister Veronica Taylor of the New Springfield Missionary Baptist Church.
Good evening, City Council, and all you all out there in Pontiac City and across the nation. Bow our heads. First, I'm the God who's the head of my life and you all life. Let's give a silence of prayers, and we're about to pray. Father God, as I come humble, as I know how, asking you all to continue to bless the city of Pontiac, not just the city of Pontiac. Bless this whole entire nation that you are running, and let them understand without you, there's nothing that's gonna go on without your permission. And if they engage in loving you and continue to take care of you, you're gonna continue to take care of them. Lord, I'm just asking you to bless each and every household here and not here. And God, I'm asking you to please, please, take care of Pontiac City Council people and the mayor of this city. Amen?
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States. Thank you. We now, as a community, join for a moment of silence, remembering those neighbors that we've recently had to say goodbye to as they've unfortunately passed away. Glenda Acker, Susan Barrett, Suzie Best, Cynthia Bullock, Mary Kraft, Gloria Fields, Reverend Charles Hall, Tanika Jones, Gloria Logan, Olga Lopez, Dennis Martin, Dorothy McAllister, Herman Mickens, Ann Nelson McReynolds, my next door neighbor, Daniel Nicholas, Ramon Pagan Jr., Eudora Russell, Anthony Stiles Sr., John Thomas, Dave White Jr., and Karen Young. Please join us for a community moment of silence in their memory. Thank you very much. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington. Goodman.
Yes, right here.
James.
Here.
McGinnis.
Present.
Nicholson.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Rutherford.
Present.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Quorum being established. Could I please have a motion to excuse Councilman Carrington from this meeting for personal reasons? It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Nicholson to excuse pro temp Carrington from this evening's meeting for personal reasons. Any discussion? Hearing on roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The council member is therefore excused. Is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. Any discussion or amendments? Hearing on roll call, Clerk Doyle on adoption of the agenda as prepared.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The agenda is approved. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Parker. This evening's consent agenda includes the April 11th Public Safety, Health, and Wellness Council Subcommittee Meeting Minutes, the April 11th Finance and Personnel Subcommittee Meeting Minutes of the City Council, the April 16th City Council Special Meeting Minutes, and the April 16th City Council Regular Meeting Minutes. It also includes the resolution to approve the purchase of S C A G Power Motor, Power Mower from Burdick Street Landscape Supply and Equipment using Cooperative Purchasing Sourcewell Contract Number 031121, a resolution correcting the clerical error in Resolution 23-305 approved on August 22nd, 2023, a resolution following up on the Housing Commission's seat appointment by the mayor, and resolution again requesting a written timeline for the Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard Bridge Demolition and Reconstruction Project. The City Council adopted a resolution asking for that last week, and so this is reiterating that request for the written update. That is the consent agenda. It has been moved and seconded. Roll call on adoption. Clerk Doyle.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. We are at the first of two special presentations this evening. We want to welcome Tanisha Taylor and John Cantrell, the leaders of the city's youth recreation program. They're going to be sharing with us a preview of some of the youth recreation amenities and offerings for our community's youth that the city of Pontiac's Youth Recreation Program is presenting, but also they are presenting the recent championship winners of their elementary boys' basketball tournament. So we give the floor to youth recreation leadership and to take it from there.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Good evening, City Council.
Good evening, Council, our clerk, and our mayor, deputy mayor, and of course, our citizens of Pontiac and our viewing audience. Tonight is a special night. It's a presentation night. As you see them assembling behind me is our elementary boys' basketball champions. We currently have sixteen programs for our spring sessions. However, our boys' basketball team went for six weeks, and they played different teams, and their championship game was on this past Saturday at ATAP, and it was an awesome game. I'm going to call up our assistant youth recreation manager, Mr. John Cantrell, so he can talk more about the program.
And for those family members, you can feel free to line the wall if you want to get a good perspective. You won't be blocking the screen. That doesn't bother us in the least. We want to make sure everyone's able to comfortably enjoy this. It should still be on with the red button.
This one right here? All right. How everybody doing? I'm John Cantrell. We not only had a champions up here, but we have the runners up. That's Whitman. We also have some little fellas in here. Step up for me. Biddy boy. So I basically want to acknowledge these kids. They put in a lot of work. Even though the practice time is limited, they still get their all. They play hard. They are our friends, even though they go to different schools. I want to commend my staff, which is Sean Moore, where he at? Tim Williams. We also have Bruce Mothers and Deandre Hall. We all went to college, played basketball. Me and Deandre, we went overseas. So basically, we bringing this back together, raising these kids with our experience of life, and then influencing them to carry on. So I just want the little kids to see the big kids, because they're gonna be up here soon. So that's it.
So just to add on to what Mr. Cantrell talked about, this is what it's all about. It's Pontiac, breeding Pontiac, and champions breeding champions. And so I'm ecstatic about that because all of these coaches and coordinators and workers, they're right here from the city of Pontiac, and as he said, they played ball, and they are state champions themselves, and went on and even played pro ball. So let's give it up for our staff, who's amazing. So again, keep that in mind. Champions breeding champions. How awesome is that? We would like for them to take a picture with our council.
Sure. And do you want to name check the team members? If you or Mr. Cantrell are able to spotlight those players that are able to be with us tonight?
Okay, that would be Mr. Cantrell.
How y'all doing today? Okay, we got De'Er Hare. We got Dante Bean. We got Von Zell Lane. We got Johnny Stovall. We got Khalil Lawrence. We got Jonah Bird, and myself, Javon Stovall, the coach, underdogs.
For Whitman Coach, we have Dominique Briggs.
We got Eli Briggs, Martice Kellum, Christian Chandler, and King Lee, and we missing about three more players out here. Thank you.
Let's give them all a hand.
For the biddy boy. We got Dallas Hopkins. We got Dexter. What's your last name, Dexter?
Watts.
Dexter Watts. And we got Alana Jones, and we got some, we got one over there hiding. Come here, man. Take your hoodie off. Take your hood off. What's your last name? And then we got Little Chuck Hammond. That's the biddy boy. But we also, it's like fifty of them, but we canceled practice, so I guess they said they want no pizza up here or something, so they wasn't gonna come.
Very good. So Mr. Cantrell, if you want to have them line up here, council members will join, and Mayor, you can go down front if you want to welcome those. And for those community members that came out to support those teammates here tonight, you can, of course, make your exit now. We encourage you to socialize downstairs so that way the roar of the fans doesn't crowd out the business that keeps rolling forward in these chambers. All right, the next special presentation will also be from youth recreation. They're gonna give us a preview of some of the new offerings of youth recreation opportunities for Pontiac's children. Manager Taylor, you have the floor.
Okay, I'm back again. So as I mentioned before, we have some amazing programs. Right now, we're currently offering sixteen programs, and I came to you last month and told you that we would be highlighting two programs a month. So that's what we're doing today. We're highlighting two awesome programs. It's the Voice Program, as well as the Sewing Program. Our Sewing Program has been truly amazing. The first class I went to, it was packed out. Parents wanted to join the class, and I said, well, this is for our youth. Maybe eventually, we will offer sewing classes, but it's been great because some time ago, during a challenging time in Pontiac, home economics was taken out of the schools, the curriculum, and that's a life skill. So sewing is super important, and I'm ecstatic about the program, but I am going to allow Ms. Bridget Greer, who is the owner of Charmview, which is awesome, to talk about the program. I'm going to call her to the podium at this time, Ms. Bridget Greer.
I'm so excited about this program. When I leave this earth, everybody's gonna say, anybody I saw, I taught them how to sew. But my girls in the class are so excited about the program, and that's what makes it so exciting to me. So I want to tell you the benefits of sewing. It encourages practice skills, problem solving, mastering techniques, and these girls are so creative. We made, the first thing they made was like little shirts. So then they took the shirts and they took the extra fabric and made scrunchies for the hair. They made little wristbands. So I was really excited about the enthusiasm that they had for the program. And the name of the class is Sewing. So I bring in computerized sewing machines, serger sewing machines, and embroidery computerized machines. So these girls are really, and not just girls, let me stop. We do have some boys in our class, too. And yeah, so they're just excited as the girls are. But when they leave this class, they will have a skill that they can take with them. So as you can see, the machines are all computerized, and these kids are so excited about the class. I don't know if they're more excited than I am. But you can see where they made little wristbands, and this week, we're making, they're a little upset that we canceled class today, because today is my class, but we're making sweatpants, and they're putting pockets on it. And when they finish with my class, they will actually have a skill that they can take with them on life and actually get a job. There are actually jobs, summer programs that they can actually do sewing. So thank you for letting me present, and as you can see, I am very excited about this program.
Round of applause. Thank you very much, Ms. Greer.
As you see, awesome, awesome programs, and they're gaining amazing skills. So thank you. And as I've told you before, we have not just programs, and I'll say it again, quality programs. So our next program that we're gonna call up is The Voice. The Voice is in, gosh, this program, it's, you'll see for yourself, but it is facilitated by Mr. Steve Coleman of QTMC, and it's just been great. The first time I seen a video, it brought tears to my eyes just to see the expression and the emotion, the thought that went behind these programs. So I'm going to call up Mr. Steve Coleman of QTMC.
Hello, everyone. I'm Steve Coleman, of course. I want to say hello to the mayor and the city council and everyone. Thank you all for allowing us to be here today. The program that we have is called The Voice. So I'm very thankful that the city of Pontiac has offered this program for young people to come record some music. And what we do at The Voice, we do public service announcements, things about like cleaning up the city. What's another we did? No vaping allowed, and we have a lot of positive music that we're doing here at the studio. This is a recording studio where these young people, they come in, and we have an idea. Ms. Nancy, she helps out. She's always, she's a parent of one of the young people that come in, and she comes in and she helps out and helps write lyrics. We find the music, and the kids go in the studio, and they record these songs, and from the ages of six years old, all the way up to... Jason, how old are you? Jason's thirteen years old. It's such a wonderful thing to see these young people started at a young age. My, myself, I started recording when I was fourteen years old, and we had a record here in the city of Pontiac. The name of the group was QTMC, and the song was called "My Buddy" in 1986. So I went on from then to do twenty-five years with the Detroit Pistons, and I worked ten years for the world famous Harlem Globetrotters. So in my retirement, I'm home, and I want to help these young people be successful and make some good music here in the city of Pontiac. So I want to introduce you guys to the young people who have been helping me out. These are a few people who are on my team. Jason, come on up here. Jason, and Avery, and Ms. Kennedy, come on up here, Ms. Kennedy. And so these young people, how old are you?
Eight.
Eight years old. Come on, they can't see you back there. Come over here. Ms. Kennedy, how old are you, Avery?
Eleven.
Eleven years old. Jason, how old are you?
Thirteen.
Thirteen years old. So it's a great dynamics of age group, but they all come in, and we all work together. So I wanted to show you all the video of what we have been working on, one of the videos that we've done, and it's called Pontiac Strong. And we were doing affirmations the last time in the studio where we explained what the P and the O and the N and the T. So you guys can check it out, if you don't mind. Here we go. So thank you all. Yeah. Yeah. So again, thank the city of Pontiac for allowing us to do these programs. I definitely want to keep them going. Hopefully, I'm sure this is like one of the first programs where you can come to the studio and record for free. So hopefully we can keep this going, and more, more young people can come, and we can do more PSAs. We love what we do. Thank the city of Pontiac. Thank the mayor, and thank the city council. Oh, yeah. And thank Tanisha and Pontiac Youth Recreation and Enrichment. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. A few, a few brief questions or feedback in the last few seconds of the special presentation portion. Councilman Rutherford.
Good evening. Two questions. Number one, what do we spend on these programs in regards to sewing and the actual budget for the Voice? And number two, is there a map that shows where every program that we have is located? And if not, when will it be created?
We don't, I'll go backwards. We don't have a map created for the programs. However, if you go to pontiacrecreation.reckdes.com, all of the locations are on there. And then we have numbers readily available for any questions if anyone gets lost. So it's available. The address is where the programs are located, but there is not a map.
The second question?
Okay.
The answer to the first question?
So to what we spend on the programs, it varies. So for sewing, I believe, right off the bat, I don't know that number right off my head, but I would say any, about $5,000.
Other council members in the last few seconds? Okay. Oh, Councilman James?
I'd just like to say, I really appreciate you bringing the kids in and highlighting certain of these programs because, you know, people who don't necessarily go to rec desks are not familiar with what the program is doing. So I appreciate you bringing it to council and exposing the kids so that we can actually see what's going on. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to, for the sake of time, conclude it there. Thank you very much for your time. And with that, we're going to get to our final special presentation, a Pontiac Business. Want to spotlight them, 3D Creative Designs of Pontiac. We give the floor to Mr. and Mrs. Williams to introduce their company.
Good evening. My name is Tanisha, and this is James Williams. And we are from 3D Creative Designs. We are a 3D technology company located in Pontiac. I was born and raised here, so very familiar with the territory. Just to give you a little bit about our company, the reason why we created this company, it was a vision my husband had came up as growing up in Pontiac. There were not a lot of STEM programs around in Pontiac. And what we wanted to do is bring this creativity to Pontiac students to give them an idea of what a doable STEM program would look like. So in saying that, you know, being from an urban area, they see my husband, you know, he's a black man in STEM, and to really show and focus on, you know, what you could do with that type of technology. So a little bit about the vision. Basically, just transforming lives through our design, training, and job opportunities is what our vision is. Our mission is to produce high-quality 3D printed products and designs and empower individuals, giving them a sense of knowing that they can do this type of job. And you can start with an associate's degree at OCC. And you can pivot your way into making $40,000 and upward. Next slide. And this is just a little bit about our team. Myself, I've spent 23 years in corporate in various roles. James has been in the technology multimedia field for over 40 years. And now I'm going to turn it over to our chief innovator officer, James, and he's going to go over some more information about the positions and salary.
All right. Good evening, city council. How everybody's doing? Going into what my wife was saying, piggybacking off of her about the industry, about as you can see, as five states as we show here, about the growth and about how marketable it could be for our salary and pay by weekly, month, and annual salaries. As you see, the slide to the left shows the growth that by 2030, how high it's going to grow. 3D printing is not just with 3D printing figurines and things like that. It lends itself to multiple things. It is so many things. And as we went down to Michigan Works, and we looked, there's over 75 different applications, 3D printing touches, as far as medical, manufacturing, automotive. I work for a company doing aerospace. We 3D parts for airplanes there. Another facet of the 3D printing market, which is growing, is called 3D imaging technology. This is even a more advanced setting of 3D printing, and it lends itself to the same thing, where you could 3D print objects as far as being able to create a mesh, and you will be able to 3D print them, produce them, and function. So you've seen certain things like 3D printed images as far as bones, skulls, organs. All of these things can be reduplicated with the 3D printed technology. As a career path, it's growing as far as hitting itself in science, math, all different industries. It's ever-changing, and it's growing. Right now, we see it in a small market. It's going to grow tremendously as far as 3D printing touches, everything out here. Like we said, like the industries of technology, we offer technology training, development, product design, 3D architectural design, and even blueprint and graphic design work as well. Currently, we started up a 3D printing training class for young kids. But it's not just for the kids, too. We have a lot of adults who want to learn and want to go into the industry as well. We're going into our second semester of teaching kids. We have a returning student who's come back to our class. They really enjoy it, and they're really excited about learning how to create things on their own. We also do pathways and connections with some of the projects that are already going on with different industries here, with the Ascend Foundation, Michigan Works. We have reached out with partnerships for them as well. These are just a few of our products that we have designed and created for other industries out here as well. Even part of, like you said, with the design of innovation and everything that it touches. So reach us, you can look at our support, 3D printing craft, I mean, 3D printed creative designs, our website. And our phone number is listed on there as far as contacts.
And just to piggyback on what he said about the 3D printing classes that we're offering, it is through the Pontiac Youth Recreation Department, and it is a free class. So we are teaching students from 6th to 12th grade. So have your students sign up for our class. They'll learn. They will end with a 3D printed project. And then also, we have a gift for the city council.
I'll take some.
Do you want us just to give it to one person?
That'll be fine.
Okay. So we'll give them to deputy over here on the end, Cal Phamie Stevens. And what these are, is these are 3D printed phone blocks. And we specially created it for the city of Pontiac. And it has PCC, we couldn't write the whole Pontiac City Council on there. And then it has our design at the bottom. So this is for the city council. And it's a very important program because of what we do, we can actually help with the economic development. And it is a doable program, and there is sustainability in 3D printing. If you saw the 3D printed house in Detroit, imagine building a 3D printed house in Pontiac. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Williams. I'm going to, in the last few minutes, any feedback or questions from council members? Councilman Rutherford?
I just want to say to the Mr. and Mr. Williams, this is fascinating that you're doing this program and that you actually are putting your money where your mouth is and investing in the students. I didn't know that you were part of the Pontiac Youth Program. I'm hoping that it's offered year-round to the administration, and not just in the spring and the summer. They do it year-round. And also making sure that you have the budget and the means that you need to have for the program. So that's what I want to see. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Other final questions or feedback? Mayor Grimal.
I just want to express my appreciation for what you do and for your working with our young people as part of the youth recreation program. And just in terms of all of the youth recreation enrichment and recreation programs we've heard about tonight, I really want to tip my hat to Tanisha Taylor and John Cantrell for their leadership in dramatically improving youth recreation programming in the city. And virtually, everything that they offer is free of charge. And so I want to encourage people to go online, enroll in these great opportunities for our young people in this community, because we do offer a lot. I always say, no matter what a young person is interested in, we've got something for them through our youth recreation enrichment programming.
Thank you. Well, for the sake of time, let's give a final round of applause, and thank you for your time and investment into the city of Pontiac. Pontiac's own Mr. and Mrs. Williams of 3D Creative Designs. We are now at recognition of elected officials. Are there any current elected officials that want to give an update about their position? Seeing none, we're now at agenda address, opportunity to speak on items on the agenda before it comes to us. Councilman Rutherford, who's first up?
Dr. Deidre Waterman, which items will you be speaking on? Yeah, but you still have to announce it.
To the microphone, please.
To the microphone, please. 28 and 13, Dr. Deidre Waterman. 28 and 13. You're welcome.
Good evening. I'd like to see the Zetas in the house tonight, Divine Nine, sisters. But also, on the agenda night, one of the agenda items that you do have is for council, administration is asking, you council to allot another $2.8 million from the ARPA fund for place making. And I'm just wondering, with some of the other ARPA projects in disarray right now, and I brought you the intention, the problems with the homeownership force, city homeowners, that you had to lock down, that people want that to be opened up again because they can get that $25,000. That had to be closed down. You're still trying to work that out. So many problems with the small business. It's behind schedule, and there's so many, so much confusion. And you have to answer, and can't find anybody to answer the questions for you. So why take on another project yet without the other projects not yet completed and working satisfactorily? So I ask you that. But also on the agenda, in the last couple of weeks, it's been very interesting, that half the agenda is correcting mistakes from previous agendas. And the other half is where council is saying, you need leadership. You know, where are all these staff members that need to be replaced? I'm saying, there's an even more profound question. With all these department heads that are missing, that's kind of explained some of the malfunctioning here. But why is it so hard for this administration to recruit and retain capable workers? Of the five departments you have, they don't have leaders. You know, we're missing a finance director. You got to have the budget ready from the mayor next week. That's all you need that to be done. You don't have a DPW director for a long time. You don't have a grants administrator. She walked away because she doesn't want to be part of the political mess that goes on. And you don't have a economic, well, economic development director, so she's not coming to talk to council. And that's been happening ever since she was named in that lawsuit before Highland. That's my time. I'll finish more.
Thank you. Robert Bass? I don't see him. Florence Atifia? Speaking on sound and public works? What'd you say? You're speaking on sound and public works. You're welcome.
Public work and sound, or noise, hazardous noise. I'm Florence Atifia, and a former Pontiac resident. I grew up in Pontiac, and I went to school in Pontiac, and I worked in the Pontiac School District 38 years. My concern now is always the kids. And public works and sound, noise. Noise can be damaging to the human body. It affects the cells of body and the DNA. For example, noise can cause hearing loss in babies, children, adults. Noxious noise to a certain decibel can also affect adults, especially the senior citizens. So our young people, babies, and seniors are the most vulnerable. Now HIPAA is involved with noxious noise because of the damage that it can do to a human body similar to our phones, 5G lines, magnetic field, magnetic field. It says it could cause cancer. Keep your children off their phones, looking at television all the time, especially, yes, especially color TV. Let me say that a long time ago. But my concern is, it's already been talked about in Pontiac, that the community has experienced noxious noise.
That is your time, ma'am.
HIPAA, well, I got to, HIPAA should be involved. And I get another chance, so I will talk more about noise.
Thank you. Carlton Jones, number three.
Good evening. First, I just want to say, you know, we don't only have this two minutes. But council, I would say, take a good look at three, four, five, and six, dealing on the agenda items dealing with budget, finance, and ARPA. I got a chance to review them. I had quite a few questions, but I would just say, council, take a good look at them, so we make sure we can all be on one accord. But I do want to speak to H. up under the consent agenda. I think we all have, a lot of people have been asking about the bridge. And I'm hoping that we do get some information. And I'll say, whatever the information that does come out, I truly believe with that bridge already being down a period of time, and it's already projected, it's going to take another couple years or more to get it totally refixed, that we need to look at some temporary to at least open it to a vehicle, if nothing but light vehicle, if possible. And if we could consider that, because it's very important to us on the south side of Pontiac, south and east side of Pontiac. But I want to commend Ms. Taylor for what she brought before us today. If you notice what's happening, these people like myself, who have spent time here in Pontiac, are coming back and wanting to give. The Williams are a good example. You may not have noticed, may not have known this, but they are part of TDC. This is what type of thing that we do. It's try to connect people to career opportunities. The sewing and the singing, those are skills. That's what TDC is about, developing the talent right here so it can be valuable to us in Pontiac. So I just commend her. And if we could look at how we can truly, don't think that there's a number that we should not be putting towards that. So council, let's get behind this enhancement, Mayor. Enrichment, we need it.
That concludes Agenda Address.
Thank you very much. We're now at number one on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the adoption of an order?
Oh, no, excuse me. I'm sorry. They, I didn't see these. Oh, no, excuse me, I'm sorry, I didn't see these two.
Okay.
I apologize, I did not do that purposely. Darlene Clark? Number nine, okay. I apologize, I didn't, I should have flipped it over, pay attention.
Good afternoon, council and administration, Mayor. I'd like to, for number nine, for the GURS. Thank you, Mayor, for being transparent, and thank you first, Ms. Rutherford, for bringing it out for the mayor's attention, for the GURS fund. And since we being transparent and attorneys here to speak on it tonight, there's a few questions that we need the attorney to address. The address to tell exactly how much is in the old GURS fund budget. And the second is the scheduling. On April 3rd, I mean, let me back up a little. In March, you had a notice to appear. And on April 30th, on Tuesday of next week, you're meeting in the Judge Chamblers for And then on, uh, hold on, April 23rd, which is today, you file your discovery. Now, please explain to the people who's listening in from here and all over, from every state, Chicago, New York, other Tennessee, you name it, all of our, explain to the people, why did you wait so late today to file your discovery? Especially when you told the people last week that there was a conversation being made with the attorneys to put a plan of action on how you're going to move forward in giving the people their money. Also, too, let me give the case number for the people who's listening. The case number for what's going on right now is case number 2410287. At the Theodore Lafayette United State Courthouse at 231 West Lafayette Boulevard, Detroit, Michigan. The clerk's phone number is 313-234-5000. Case number, once again, is 2410287.
That is your time. Thank you. Ms. Gloria Miller, which item?
Uh, she had a 12, or she, I may not get you, I'm sorry. I may not get all of them.
Thank you.
Actually, I want to start first with number six. Put my glasses on. The American Rescue Funds. You know, this is, this is the agenda item, I concur with you, former Mayor Waterman. Who doesn't have a finance director? A DPW director? Grants director? And American Rescue, so that mean, where have the money been going? Who's been allocating? Who's been doing it all this time? This is something citizens of Pontiac need to ask. This is important. I worked here for years. I worked in treasury for years. You can't go without one. Which makes sense, maybe why a lot of money being amended all the time in budgets. It's getting ready, it's time to guys, for you guys do your budget. Council President, maybe you can answer that, your closing comment. One thing the council was always responsible for, and if anybody go back and look at the clips when I was on the council, we used to have a check register. And the former mayor will tell you, I hit her every time, where is she? In here. She would tell you, when things were spent, it is the council job to make sure. If you don't have another job, you can't fire anybody, you can't hire anybody, but you guys are supposed to watch that money. That's your job. You're going to be held responsible for this. A finance director? That's everything. Like I stated, I worked in treasury two years. I handled every piece of money that came into the city. And we cannot go without offense. And it's incumbent on you to make the administration do it. No, you can't hire them, but you can put the feet to the fire and say, these people are very important that's missing. And Councilwoman Rutherford, thank you for putting transparency out there. Because one thing about Pontiac, you can't hide anything. It's going to come out. And I appreciate you for doing it.
Now, that concludes, excuse me, Agenda Address.
Okay. Is there a motion to, for number one, approve adoption of an ordinance to amend the municipal code?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilwoman James. This amends the municipal code, Article 4, Stormwater Control, Division 1, Sections 118-409 and 118, excuse me, -408 and 118-409, to clarify the process and recording requirements for stormwater control, long-term maintenance agreements. This was read for a first time last week, and now is before us for a second time, for the sake of time. Mayor, do you want me just to hand it right off to the representative from the DLZ Engineering Firm? You have the floor, sir, to give us a little summary of, and recap what we discussed already before, but what's before the community and council for deciding tonight?
Thank you, yeah. So this is just an amendment to an ordinance that was created last summer, and this is just to amend some circular language that was in there for executing stormwater maintenance agreements with new developments. And so that's, that's all this is, is to just correct that circular nature, so that way we can start moving forward with abiding by Oakland County Water Resources Commission's design engineering standards.
Thank you very much. This was discussed last week. Is there any final deliberation tonight? Hearing none, speakers list is exhausted. Roll call, Clerk Doyle, on adoption of the ordinance to amend the municipal code regarding stormwater control.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
That motion carries, the ordinance is amended. Thank you very much. We are now at number two on the agendas, there are a motion to adopt the resolution approving the Michigan Department of Transportation Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard Road reconstruction project.
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Parker. Mayor, would you like to speak first? You have the floor.
Thank you. This is simply a proposal and recommendation to approve a contract for the repair of Martin Luther King Boulevard from M-59 to Perry, and also from South Boulevard north to just past Murphy Park. These repairs are long overdue, particularly the repairs between M-59 and Perry, so we're excited to be in a position to be able to launch this road project this year. I know we're joined by Zach Hopla of DLZ Engineering Firm, so Mr. Hopla, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so this is just, this is just entering into the actual contract agreement with MDOT, for them to be the actual fiduciary and to administer the funds and oversee the project. This is something that's already been on the, been on the tip with the state, this project's been on the radar for quite some time. So this is just entering into the contract agreement as the bid letting actually closed on April 5th. So we had those bid results, so this is just kind of going through the proper channels to actually enter into that contract agreement with MDOT. And then also to enter into a construction engineering contract agreement with HRC to actually oversee the construction.
Thank you. And so that you can have a perspective on what's before us, this will be hot mix asphalt and concrete, cold milling and resurfacing on MLK from South Boulevard to Elm Street. And my question for you, sir, is, does this work in tandem with the work that the Water Resources Commission is doing right now in that same subject area for some repairs they're doing currently, or is it an isolated, separate action?
Those are, those are two separate items, just because this is actually, this project, again, the bid letting just occurred on April 5th. So there is, the project kickoff currently is scheduled for May 1, and they are looking to commence construction May 15th, so that way everything can be done before July 4th weekend.
Okay. So that's one section. The other is from the M-59 eastbound ramp to Perry Street and along Featherstone, so that's MLK from basically just south of M-59 to Perry. And then, and again, that's hot mix asphalt and concrete, cold milling and resurfacing. And then we've also got Featherstone Street from University Drive to Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, AKA my least favorite stretch of the street in our city, where if you were coming from University Drive and you were going to pass next to White Castle and the mobile gas station, that little stretch between University and MLK, it's really rough right there, so I'm glad to see that that'll be resolved as well. It'll involve earthwork, aggregate-based concrete pavement, pavement repairs, concrete curb and gutter, sidewalk curb ramps, guardrail and permanent pavement markings and the related necessary work. So that's what's before us, the contract, so that way the State Department of Transportation can be the fiduciary. Councilman Rutherford?
Yes. How are we communicating this with the residents? Are we going to do the same blasting that we did with the residents? If so, what's the timeline? Also, is the Communication Department in charge of this, or is it your department that's in charge of this?
Thank you, Councilwoman. Yes, so I did speak with, with our PR team today, actually. We just wanted to make sure everything gets authorized by you guys. So again, once we get approval from that, we will go ahead and put together a memo and everything will be sent out via Constant Contact, the way we've been utilizing, we're going to put things on the website, social media, get that out as soon as we possibly can. Again, we just don't want to put anything out there until obviously we have all the agreements in place. But again, that is projected for construction to begin May 15th and for construction to conclude before July 4th.
And my follow-up is, are we going to use the same format that we did for Bagley and Golf Drive? That's what I'm referring to.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just want to clarify on that. Thank you so much.
Yes.
Councilwoman James?
I just have one question. It doesn't appear that this work will involve any kind of a lane reduction or the addition of bike lanes. Yes or no?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, speakers list is exhausted. What's before us now is the vote on will we approve the resolution approving the Michigan Department of Transportation Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard Road reconstruction project. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
The motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Thank you. We're at number three on the agenda, is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve a professional services contract with R&amp;J Consulting and Contracting?
Some moved.
For consulting services not to exceed $125,000. It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilwoman James. It is now before us for consideration. Mayor Grimal?
Thank you. I know we have a separate agenda item relating to this, but it certainly ties into this agenda item. As I said last week, at last week's city council meeting, we had narrowed the field of DPW director candidates to two, and we had anticipated making an offer to one of those candidates by the end of last week. We did, in fact, make an offer to one of those candidates on Friday, and that candidate accepted that offer yesterday. So the good news is, we will soon have a DPW director on staff. That will occur roughly a month from now, I think, to that candidate's credit, he wants to give his current employer 30 days' notice. And so in the meantime, we want to bring on this consultant. This is an experienced person who has a lot of experience, especially in facilities, and we want to make sure that we're plugging that gap in leadership at the DPW Department for the coming roughly 30 days until we have a full-time director onboard. Having said that, I want to turn it over to our deputy mayor to add some additional details.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. In addition to what the mayor just said, our idea is that not only would the consultant be able to fill the gap for those 30 days, the consultant would actually be a great onboarding ramp for the new director who would come. This consultant has many years of experience with the city of Pontiac, experience with BSNA, with our purchasing policies, so he would not just be here for 30 days, he would be here for some amount of time longer than that, as it takes to actually get our new DPW director up to speed.
Okay. Would the representative from R&amp;J Consulting and Contracting like to say, hey, because I see him in the room? So ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Robert England had a long career with the city of Pontiac, with the Pontiac Police Department, and also running point out facilities for Pontiac School District. Mr. England, would you like to say hello to the council?
Hello, Councilman McGinnis?
There's a microphone button at the bottom right of the base.
Thank you.
It's live.
Mr. McGinnis, Ms. Rutherford, I've met before, other council members. Basically, my name is Robert England. I hired into the city in 1984, retired in 2011. I was superintendent of Department of Public Works. I'm very well-versed in major and local street funds, equipment revolving funds, equipment purchases. I purchased all the equipment for the city, along with Vince Jimenez. I'm the guy that bought all the police cars before the county came, and we had to sell them, but I also have worked under both Mr. Leib and Mr. Stampler, along with Mr. Marshall, to dissolve a lot of union contracts. I'm president of PPMA and SAEA unions. And then in 2011, before Mr. Schimmel came in, I went to Pontiac Schools as a director of facilities. I did all of their capital improvement, their bonds, their sinking funds, very familiar with how to do construction and how to oversee it, worked with a lot of owner reps. And just be an honor to come back and help for however long you need me. And, you know, I grew up here, my parents grew up here, and looking forward to helping in any way I can. I would like to say, you know, I know you guys, I've been listening a little bit, you guys get a lot of criticism about some of the things that aren't going well, but from what I did with Mr. Marshall and dismantling the city with the emergency managers, you guys are doing amazing things. We put a lot of hurt on the city when we dismantled it, and, you know, I don't know the rationale about it, but you guys have done tremendous work to bring things back from where you were a decade ago. Things were very tough here, so I really think you guys did a good job.
And thank you. You want to clarify that you were a city employee helping to serve the transition, but it wasn't your decision or you weren't working as the emergency manager?
That's correct. We were trying to minimize the damage, to make a long story short. It was very uncomfortable, and, you know, we thought hard about it, but at the end, we built up a lot of the unions and the agreements over the years, and what better to be in a position to at least have the conversation? We lost most of the battles, but at least we were there to put our fight in for the citizens of Pontiac.
Thank you. Councilman Parker, followed by Councilman Rutherford. Microphone?
Thank you, sir, for coming back and assisting. Excuse me. Thank you for coming back and assisting with the transitional process that we're going through, sir. We do appreciate your dedication to making Pontiac better. But I just want to remind those who typed up the resolution that the date of the year It should be 23 and not 24.
Councilman Parker makes a motion to amend, so that way the first whereas will now read, the city of Pontiac has been without a Department of Works Director since October 2023, currently reads 2024. It's been moved by Parker, seconded by Rutherford. Any final discussion on that particular amendment? Updating the language? Are you clear on the amendment language, Clerk Doyle?
Mm-hmm.
All right, let's have some roll call fun.
Rutherford?
Yes. Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
That motion carries, the amendment passes. So now that language, the resolution language has been cleaned up. We're now back to the main motion, the resolution is amended. So obviously, the city council, in last week's agenda, when we raised the question about capacity, there's been many, many needs in projects that neighborhoods and city public works have, and we just need more capacity to pull it off. So I welcome this solution that the administration's bringing to the table to solve that, those immediate, short-term needs. This is not the only solution, it's a part of the solution, and the city council welcomes other ways in which we can strike while the opportunity exists now to make improvements to our facilities, make improvements to our public work services, make sure we're getting maximum value for the contracts that the public works department is the point person on, because many of the functions that for past decades, public works might have handled directly, it's now contracted work. So we want to make sure that those contract work is delivering what they should. Councilman Rutherford?
Yes. First of all, always a pleasure to see you, Ms. England. Just a quick question, if this is so approved, what is the first thing you're going to do to set into motion to actually supersede the issues that are happening in DPW? For example, what about with the, I forgot what our garbage company is called, but what do they call, what's their name? GFL? Those, how are you going to improve those relations, because it's not great?
We will be working with the mayor's office, obviously, but there is quite a list that they gave me.
There is.
And again, I know that you're, you've got some good staffing coming. I've worked with Vince Jimenez, and I've worked with Bob Shelton and Larry Robinson, I actually brought in many years ago when he worked for an outside contractor, so prioritization will be to the mayor, but I'm really looking forward to addressing the DPW facility issues, starting the facility condition assessment. I think it's important for you guys to know what buildings you need work in. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
And my follow-up, because I'm over building and facilities, will you be available and readily available to the administration to be at the meeting on Friday? Because I do have several questions and concerns that need to be addressed, preferably with making sure Larry and Vic receive adequate people. making sure Larry and Vic receive adequate, uh, people to work within the system and what they've been doing running the city by them, basically by themselves as far as this.
Yes, ma'am, that's some of the things that me and, uh, Mr. Stevens have talked about.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Any final discussion? And thank you for bringing, elevating the items that we've been discussing in the facilities and properties subcommittee of the city council. Hearing no final discussion, speaker's list is exhausted. Roll call, Clerk Doyle, on adoption of number three, the resolution to approve a professional services contract with R&amp;J Consulting and Contracting for consulting services not to exceed $125,000.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
The motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Thank you very much for being here, Mr. England. Number four on the agenda, is there a motion to adopt the resolution approving the budget amendment?
Some moves.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, second by Councilwoman James. This is for the current fiscal year 2023-2024, for development and placemaking to increase the estimated revenue by $2,875,000 under the GL Code 285-000-532.000, DEVPRJ. Uh, $175,000 under the GL Code 285-000-532.000, dash parking, and increase the budget appropriations by $150,000 to GL Code 285-690-818.035, parking, dash parking management. $25,000 to GL Code 285-690-777.000, excuse me, .002, parking, dash traffic signs. $10,000 to GL Code 285-690-901.000, um, dash DEVPRJ, dash printing and bindery services, and $2,865,000 to GL Code 285-690-818.000, DEVPRJ, dash other professional services. All right, that's now before us, mayor and administration. Uh, this was before us two weeks ago when we authorized the posting, and let's discuss it further.
Yeah, thank you. So we touched on this briefly two weeks ago when we posted notice about it. Uh, this is the actual, uh, budget amendment proposal for a vote. Uh, I don't see our economic development manager here, so I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Mayor Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. So, City Council, the, the bulk of these funds are for projects that are not yet 100% determined, although I can give you examples of them. We have the Transportation Museum, um, pop-ups for Main Street Village, and also building in specific places where food trucks can park, at our parks and in downtown. And then we have the specific items which have been enumerated, the, the parking management, the traffic signs, the printing and bindery services. Additionally, in that $2.8 million that I told you would be part of the Transportation Museum and Main Street pop-up village, there's also the contemplation of doing, um, projects to be determined by a competitive process.
Do you wanna explain more about the competitive process? So it'll be, there would be an application?
There would be an application for, yes. So dollars would be made available for different projects that the Economic Development Department would be looking to put on and saying, "Hey, these dollars are available to help you do this specific project."
Councilman Rutherford?
Was any of these numbers allocated for downtown cleanup and for people to be working on, like with their partnership? My cut off. With Main Street Pontiac and as well as with CEO, because there was been times and months I've been asking about, are we gonna put this money set aside for us to have people cleaning up on a regular in that area? So I yield to, uh, President, I yield to the administration to answer that question.
The short answer is yes, we've been considering that, and I think it's premature, of course, until we go through that competitive process to mention any particular beneficiaries, but the short answer is yes, we wanna make sure that we're making investments in neighborhoods, in downtown, with these funds.
Councilman?
The follow-up would be, you stated that in this, um, it has traffic signs. What about the welcoming signs into the city of Pontiac, preferably on Woodward Avenue, on the, uh, on the corridors? Would they be improved, and if so, why are they not in this?
Those actually are something that we're contemplating as well, are gateway signs to the community. And so, I, I know that the, uh, deputy mayor threw out a couple of possibilities, but there's actually quite a bit of need in terms of signage, in terms, in terms of both gateway signs and in terms of traffic signs, street signs, and those amounts, frankly, are going to exceed the $25,000 listed here. So this is, I think, an initial budget amendment to get some funds flowing for purposes of the parking component, which we, uh, collectively with council, just approved last week, uh, but there will likely be some additional budget amendments coming.
All right, thank you.
Any final discussion? So, a summary is, this step is just required in order to obligate American Rescue Plan funds for these eligible expenses. This doesn't, isn't the final approval, that would come at a future city council meeting, um, but this is just to make sure that the procedural ball continues to roll forward, um, while the time is eligible. Any final discussion? All right, hearing nothing further. Number four on the agenda, roll call and adoption of the resolution approving the budget amendment. Clerk Doyle.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Uh, yes.
Five yays, no nays.
That motion carries, the resolution is adopted, and the budget is amended. We're at number five on the agenda. It doesn't need a move and a support, because unless I'm, um, recalling wrong, Clerk Doyle, feel free to correct me, um, but we had an, already a motion and a second. This was postponed from last week's meeting. This is, um, approving budget amendments of various line items. Um, so, since that's already before us, I'd give the floor to the administration for a summary.
Thank you. Uh, we wanna be as detailed as possible in this presentation, and so I wanna invite our deputy mayor to really run through a relatively detailed explanation of why the budget amendment is needed and the various items that are part of this budget amendment.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. So as, as was described by our senior accountant, um, Sekar Bawa, when this amendment was introduced several weeks ago, this is required to bring the city's budget up to a state of currency. And so just for everyone watching, um, city budgets are not like, city budgets are a lot like your home budget in that the city brings in money and the city spends out money, and at the end of the day, the city cannot spend more money than it brings in unless, of course, it has money in its bank account, right? So you can pull from your bank account to spend more money than you brought in in any particular time period. But unlike your personal, um, finances, the city is not allowed to end the fiscal year without having a completely balanced budget. So what that means is, at the end of the year, the, the city has to have made amendments to its budget so that what you actually brought in and what you actually spent out all show together, so that you either show a zero balance or you show that you, um, put money back into your bank account. So, these are a group of amendments that have been put forward to actually true-up some of the things that have happened. So for example, we have parking meter revenue increase of $60,000. So at the beginning of the year, let, uh, at the beginning of our fiscal year, July 1, 2023, we did not know how much money we were actually going to generate through the parking meters. We made a guess, and based on, now that we're at, almost at the end of our fiscal year, so our fiscal year ends on June 30th, 2024, so now that we're coming close to that time period, we have looked at the amount of money that we've been collecting every week, every month, and we've made an estimate as to, okay, what does that number need to be to actually get us to that, uh, true-up number? And so you can, that is true for parking meters, for our zoning board of appeals, our planning review, and our planning review fees. So all of those are, um, examples there. Under reimbursement from Oakland County Sheriff's Office, um, the, and this item actually ties into another item further down the line in this budget amendment. When we have special events like the Woodward Dream Cruise and, um, uh, what is it, the Knights?
Roadkill.
Roadkill Knights, the city actually does not bear the brunt of that cost. The organizations that put on those events bear the brunt of those costs. So the city pays upfront, and then we get reimbursed. And so these are reimbursements that are coming in for those types of events. Additionally, the sheriff's office has a number of grants that they apply to, and then they get money and give that money back to us, um, for overtime. And so that is what this sheriff's reimbursement overtime is. Administrative reimbursements for IT, um, software. So the city bought a, bought new, um, software last year, and we were, I, I, we were able to change which department was paying for that software, and so that is where you see this number here. Um, if there are any other specific questions in the general fund increases of revenue, I'd be happy to answer them, otherwise it would just be redundant to go through every item.
Okay. Uh, let's take it, um, by that category. So, uh, increases or decreases in estimated revenue, the deputy mayor identified, uh, about half of them. There's also, uh, adjustments for investment income, Phoenix Center insurance reimbursement, Homeland Security FEMA, engineering inspection fees, municipal service agreement, adult marijuana fee, and city-owned equipment rental. Uh, so it's adjusting from what the budget year started to where we anticipate the budget year will end. Any questions on those estimated revenues? Councilman Rutherford?
So for Fund 248, the opioid settlement fund, if, when is that funding coming available? It's Fund Dash 284?
Yeah. Okay. So that's a, a great question. Those funds are here, we just have not actual, we receive them from an opioid settlement, similar to the tobacco settlement that a lot of municipalities and governments received a few years back. We have not yet appropriated or, um, programmed those funds, so they're just sitting in the bank account as of right now.
So my follow-up is to ensure that they are not moved into the general fund?
They cannot be.
Okay, I just wanna make sure. Thank you.
Any final questions on this category, revenues? Councilwoman James, microphone?
Yeah, I, I'm just trying to understand what dates, uh, so these, um, proposed budget amendments are changes, either increases or decreases in the budget, from what date to what date?
So...
Are they all different dates? What's going?
No, 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 no. Um, that, that is a great question. So again, the beginning date is the beginning of the budget, July 1, 2023.
Okay.
Uh, and then so, the to-date is literally up until this budget amendment was put together. There will be one more of these that will come in front of you at the very, very end of the year to do a final, uh, true-up of any, uh, additional dollars that we brought in that we had not anticipated, or additional last-minute spending that we did that we had not already anticipated.
Okay, so, like about till April 1?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so moving on, now we're looking at the appropriations. In 201 accounting, it's other professional services. In 228, information technology, it's computer supplies, professional services for the BSNA annual fee, and telephone to, um, reflect the consolidation of information technology with cable as budget categories. 253, treasurer, it's for postage, printed forms, armored car services, nothing crazy, just $6,000 for the armored car services, so the money that you bring in at the treasurer's office doesn't go away, um, in the wrong way. Um, bank char, service charges. And then, uh, 257, assessor, it's, um, contractual, temporary, or part-time labor, increased by 3,000. 265, building maintenance, for building maintenance services. Personnel services, it's other professional services, as well as contractual, temporary, or part-time labor. 301, police, it's for Oakland County Sheriff overtime. 447, engineering, it's for software, the contribution to the IT, um, budget line item, and equipment rental. 448, street lighting, it's for utilities, street lighting. 458, public works operations, software contributed, contributions to the information technology budget line item. 564, Phoenix Center parking, for water and sewer utilities, just a $1,000 change to increase, and gas heat utilities, again, um, $500, a very minor change, but we wanna make sure it's, uh, reflect all of reality. 925, debt service, um, debt service for the Ottawa Phoenix, um, decreasing by $700,000 since the Phoenix Center debt is paid off in full, hallelujah. And then interest expense, Ottawa Phoenix, decrease of $180,000. We, the taxpayers, have to pay less, um, in Phoenix Center debt because it is paid off in full, hallelujah. 966, transfers to and from other funds, uh, that's, uh, to, uh, transfer, uh, to Fund 659, the insurance fund. Uh, and so those are the general fund, um, then I'll wait to go before Fund 202 and, and beyond, um, but is there any other questions about the general fund items? Councilman James?
Um, I'm not sure. Would increase, uh, would, page six, the, uh, medical insurance appropriations, is that part of general fund?
Uh, no, but you can, since you have the floor, you can delve into it?
I'd like for Deputy Mayor to go through that, uh, particularly on page seven, it says, uh, the above 659 insurance fund budget amendment would reduce the fund by $1,078,000. Just kind of, if you could just tell us what that's about.
Yes, so this is, um, thank you for fast-forwarding us to, to this one. This is actually a slightly complicated fund. Because of the, all of the changes that happened with the emergency management and ending, um, insurance for retirees, there was a deal that was struck such that the city of Pontiac was paying for the GERS, um, retirees and for the police and fire retirees, and then was being reimbursed from those funds. Since those, since the GERS and the police and fire VIBAs have been established and now actually combined, and they are now paying those bills directly and no longer being a pass-through, the city is no longer being a pass-through for paying of those bills, and so this is recording that change. So there was $515,000 of payments that were supposed to have been made, that will now not be made, so there, there is a, there is a decrease there. Um, likewise, there was a, I'm sorry, there was a, there was a, a payment that was supposed to be made to the city, a $515,000 that will not be made, but likewise, there is a payment of insurance of 2,000, 2, 2,300,000 that would have still had to have been made, that is no longer required to be made. So it, it is, it is a great question, because it is actually a slightly complex issue.
And the one on seven?
Microphone?
The, uh, 1,078,000?
Got it. Microphone.
And the one on page seven, the 1,078,000?
Yes.
Is that the same?
So, so that, that is the, um, same fund, and it is saying that in aggregate, all of these changes will make the, the numbers in that fund, um, reduced by $1,000,000. Okay. Or $1,078,000.
Okay. Anything final on those particular funds? And I'll just keep running through, com, uh, Mayor Grimal?
Yeah, just to try to, try to simplify the, the insurance fund question, when we budgeted for this fiscal year, starting July 1st, the city was still paying for retiree healthcare and then getting reimbursed from the VIBA. Uh, starting roughly at the beginning of this calendar year, January 1st, the two VIBA funds, the police and fire one and the general retiree one, combined, and they now pay the retiree healthcare directly, so the city is no longer a pass-through. And the insurance fund amendments simply reflect the fact that we're no longer paying for the healthcare and then getting reimbursed, but rather, the VIBA is paying for the retiree healthcare directly.
Okay. All right, Fund 202, major streets, uh, change, uh, there in the estimated revenue for investment income. Uh, actual revenue exceeded the budget by $87,000, so that's a good thing, the investment income that those revenues, that those funds were generating, um, needs to be, um, amended to the good. Fund 203, local streets, traffic signs, uh, also road constructions, stormwater services. Fund 208, youth recreation village, recreation facility. Uh, and Fund 226, sanitation, investment income, again, $124,000. Again, $124,000 in additional investment income generated on those funds. Fund 243, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, PRA administration. BRA, excuse me, BRA administration tax increment payment. Brownfield, just a change of $11,000. Fund 249, building inspection fund. Single family, that changes. Registration builders, that changes. Inspection demolition permit, fire alarm permit, admin fee, multi-registrations, inspection building permit, inspection electrical, electrical permit, and plan review fee. Not meaning the fee amounts themselves change, but in terms of what they've been bringing in as the year is going on, that is prompting them to either increase or decrease based on where it's anticipated to end by the end of the year. Fund 284, opioid settlement fund that was invoked. Fund 285, the ARPA fund, the line item for federal grant for American Rescue Plan parks and federal grant for American Rescue Plan youth. Both of those changes. And that was in revenue, but also for that fund, parks, vehicle purchases, professional services. Fund 2445, capital improvement fund, investment income, again, increasing by $45,000. And then also in that same fund, building maintenance, building additions and improvements. Fund 659, the insurance fund, that was discussed just now. And so that runs the gamut for those funds. Further discussion from counsel. Counsel and Rutherford.
So my question is in regards to the youth center funds. Why is that decreased or increased? I don't understand that. Secondly, I want to know about, excuse me, in the revenue, it says for demolition permits. It was increased on that level, which is actually 24900-400010, but it decreases the permits by 945,000. I'm not understanding that. Are you seeing what I'm pointing out to you, sir?
So inspection demolition permit and then inspection building permit, an increase of 38,000 for the inspection demolition permit revenues, but a decrease of $945,000 for inspection building permit.
That's correct.
Okay, so questions on the the youth recreation figures and the variation for demolition versus building permits? Mayor or Deputy Mayor? Deputy Mayor?
Yep. All right, thank you, counsel. We'll go in the order that you first introduced them. The recreation facility program, increase of $50,000. That is a, you saw the programs that we talked about tonight. More programs were brought online than had been originally. More programs were brought online than had been originally suggested. Additionally, we have a number of programs that are grant-funded, and as those grant funds were expended, if if overages occurred, those overages were brought out of here. So that is where you see the additional $50,000. Do you want me to keep going or?
I'm waiting until I can ask you the follow-up about that.
On the inspection demolition permits, so we had more building, more private demolitions than we had anticipated this year. So that is why there is an increase in that. And then on the inspection building permit, we had two major projects that we had anticipated would come in for building permits this year that did not. They will come in next fiscal year.
Okay, so the economic development, housing and planning subcommittee, you can give us more detail there.
Yes.
Has the Parks Recreation and Public Works Subcommittee heard yet about the overruns or additional costs for youth recreation programming yet?
No.
Okay, so we'll want to hear about that. Counsel and Rutherford.
That's what I'm getting to. So the budget for youth rec is 392,000, correct?
You've got the floor, and then we'll hear it once.
Yeah, it's 392,000. So I'm just trying to understand how did this happen? And where's the checks and balances so that this doesn't happen again? Because there's other things I could ask, but I'm being polite. So can you explain to me how this particular, why are we doing this when we have allocated funds from the village? So that's what I'm referring to. There's no way that we should have been over budget because we don't have a physical building, so we're not paying rent.
This is from the village?
Yeah, it's for the village. Okay, we're not paying rent. So how did this happen? Anybody? I give.
Mayor or Deputy Mayor? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Okay, so the, the short answer is that these are village dollars, and we are not spending more money than the village brings in. We intentionally reduce the the amount of money that we schedule in any year for youth recreation, understanding that at some point in the future, we are going to have a building, and that building is going to have additional costs. So we have put ourselves on a diet of sort so that we could have additional funds for the time when we actually have to have a mortgage and payments and utility bills and all of that. How we ended up running over, that is a question that I just do not have the answer for as we sit here. But we spent more money in programming than we had begun. We are, we are projected to spend more money in programming than we had begun the year anticipating.
All right, so City Council will dive deeper into that, but we still got to make sure that the checkbook balances. So further discussion on the budget amendment before us. Mayor Grimal?
Yeah, well, first of all, I think it's a very valid question as to why we're spending more on youth recreation than we had anticipated when we passed the budget last year for this current fiscal year. I do, however, want to really emphasize what the Deputy Mayor said. These are all youth recreation dollars that are being spent out of the youth recreation village. No general fund dollars are going towards this. And we are still well under in terms of the amount of spending on youth recreation. We are still well below the annual amount of revenue brought in by the youth recreation village.
And on behalf of the City Council, I'll just say that's great. And the City Council needs to be apprised, aware, and authorized that so that way there's permission. Okay, so this is one form of reconciling the the budgetary impact. Any further discussion on these budget changes?
Not a discussion, just a suggestion. In future references, anything, you know, they're supposed to bring everything to the council. I'm just asking that you, as the council leadership, put more pressure on the administration to do so because I'm blindsided by some of these figures, and I don't want to prolong this vote. But I have some serious concerns with how this money is being spent, allocated, funded, what is going on? Because it was said earlier, and I'm not trying to say nothing, start another, but we are responsible for this part. And I've asked questions about certain grants that I'm not going to bring up today, just to be polite, but I am next week. And I'm going to ask how this man went over this, and how this one went over this, and who was in charge of all of this money? Because somebody has to be held accountable for this. So that, I'm asking to you, sir, to hold them, hold their foot to the fire because next week I got a whole list of stuff I'm going to ask about. Thank you.
All right, so this is the third time we're considering this roster of of budget amendments. It was before us last week. We postponed it for further research or review, and then two weeks before that when we authorized the posting. Further final discussion or review? All right. Clerk Doyle, that concludes the speakers list. Clerk Doyle, roll call and adoption of the resolution approving the budget amendments for the fiscal year.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
No.
That resolution fails.
Yep. All right, so that's that. All right, we'll go to number six. Motion, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
All right, it's been moved by Goodman. Is there a second? It's been moved by Goodman, seconded by Parker. It's a resolution approving two temporary positions to manage the American Rescue Plan Act funding, ARPA funds manager and ARPA project manager. Administration.
Yeah, thank you. We want to make sure that we've got adequate staffing and support for the American Rescue Plan, both in terms of budgeting those dollars but also in terms of programming those dollars. And so this resolution would authorize the establishment of a couple of ARPA positions as part of the city's employment position roster. And we think that's important so that we can properly move forward here and ensure compliance with all things ARPA-related.
Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, roll call Clerk Doyle on adoption of the resolution.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
Okay, that motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Just as a little sidebar, Councilman Rutherford, you voted no on number five. Was it primarily the youth recreation change that's the primary objection?
That, and also there's one other one. If you want me to point it out to you, I'll give it to you.
Because this is the same meeting, so we could do a motion to reconsider and then strike in particular budget changes, and then the rest can roll.
Okay, I'm comfortable with that. But what I'm not comfortable with, and I'm going to explain to you why. These decreases and increases don't make sense to me about certain figures. For example, if we go to, I have to put my glasses on. Hold on one second. I have concerns about engineering. I have concerns about policing. So, but my main concern has to do with the youth center, the youth village, and all that it entangles. Because, if I can elaborate?
Yes. Well, how about this? Is there a, so Councilman Rutherford, do you move to reconsider the resolution that was struck down?
So my question before I consider this, will those items be removed for us to further talk about?
I mean, if they don't, then you voted down again, and that would be pointless. So yes, I want to make sure that we surgically remove the things that are objectionable to the rest of the.
Then if we remove them, then yes, I'd do that. But if they ain't removed, I'm vote no again.
Understood. Is there a motion for reconsideration of that?
I make a motion to reconsider it based upon those statements that you stated, sir.
Councilman Rutherford moves to reconsider the defeated council resolution to approve the proposed budget amendments. Is there a second?
Support.
All right, moved by Rutherford, seconded by Goodman. So it's in the same meeting in which it was defeated, so now it is back before us for consideration. And what I'd like to consider is amendments so that way those parts that are objectionable can be removed and further reviewed or considered at a different time or not approved in changes. So you have identified so far the the changes that relates to youth recreation, and that's Fund 208. So that'll be one element of an amendment that'll be considered is removing the Fund 208 Youth Recreation Proposed Changes. Others that you wish to flag?
One moment, please. So in building, when I pointed out earlier about the 945 and?
Yes, for the the permits for building and demolition?
That as well.
Okay.
And if I can elaborate, President?
Sure.
I would like to know, I would like a presentation done to be presented to this council in regards to all of the grants that are coming out of the youth department. All of the grants, have they been spent and overspent, underspent? I've already asked for this offline. But I also want to know, how was this money allocated? How, and what are we spending on each individual program? Because this don't make sense to me.
So in Fund 249, the Building Inspection Fund, it is the inspection demolition permit and the inspection building permit. Again, that's Fund 249. Councilman Rutherford, do you move to amend the resolution to strike the proposed budget changes for Fund 208 Youth Recreation? And then Fund 249 specifically Inspection Demolition Permits for estimated revenue and Inspection Building Permit for Estimated Revenue?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Goodman, that we would essentially be striking those proposed budget amendments, but the others would remain. Clerk Doyle? Oh, okay. Thank you. So roll call on the motion to reconsider, meaning taking it up for another time, a defeat of resolution in the same meeting. Roll call Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford? Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Okay, five yays, no nays.
Okay, thank you for flagging that, Clerk Doyle. So Councilman Rutherford now makes an amendment to strike for Fund 208, the Youth Recreation Proposed Budget Amendment, and Fund 249, the change in estimated revenues for Inspection Demolition Permits and Inspection Building Permits so that can be further investigated and reviewed by council. Moved by Rutherford, seconded by Goodman. So now that amendment is before us. Any further clarification or discussion on that amendment, striking those line items in the omnibus budget amendment? All right, speakers, this exhausted. Roll call Clerk Doyle on that proposed amendment.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
That motion carries. So the resolution is the proposed budget amendment as amended. So those changes are now reflected into the main motion. Any final discussion on that main motion? The budget amendments as have just been changed. Hearing no further discussions, speakers exhausted. Clerk Doyle?
I think, I think we need a move in support now.
Okay. So is there a motion for adoption of the resolution?
Revised and correct.
Well, we're going to, I think we'll just redo the amendment just to keep it neat and tidy.
Okay, so moved.
Is there a second?
Support.
Okay, moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Goodman. So we had a vote to say, will we take it up again? Yes. Now we're moving to say, will that resolution be approved? It's now been moved, and I'd like to now repeat the amendment. We did the amendment too early before we had a motion before us. So we're just making it procedurally clean. Councilman Rutherford, do you make that same amendment that we've just adopted?
So moved.
And do you second it again, Councilman Goodman? Okay, so that's striking Fund 208 Youth Recreation and Fund 249 specifically Inspection Demolition Permit and Inspection Building Permit in the estimated revenues of the budget amendment. Any discussion on round two of the same decision? Clerk Doyle on the motion to amend the resolution before us.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
Okay, that amendment has been adopted super-duper again. Now, any further discussion on the resolution as amended? All right, roll call Clerk Doyle on the resolution to approve the omnibus budget amendments for the fiscal year 2023, 2024, with those three already having been struck out. Roll call Clerk Doyle.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
Point of information?
That motion, a motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Councilman Rutherford.
Can you ask the administration what the timeline will be so we can get the presentation on the articles that I've asked for?
On the spot after we've just done it?
Yeah, a timeline, a date, yes.
In the last few seconds, have you come up with a timeline or a date on when you can get that information to City Council?
I have not, but I can say that it most certainly will be at least three weeks as we are finalizing the budget and going into budget hearings.
All right, so there may be a way that we can, if that's the answer, then we may want to tag-team the the closing out of this fiscal year with the beginning of the new fiscal year with youth recreation specifically, in addition to grants, the the expending of grants underway in that category.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're now at number seven. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution Right, we're now at number seven. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution approving human resources pay bans upstate?
So moved.
Is there a second? Moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman James. Mayor Administration, you have the floor?
Thank you. We are joined by our Human Resources Director, Melinda Drakovich. As I think everyone is aware, we did a comprehensive compensation study to try to ensure that our compensation that we're paying to city employees is more competitive with both other communities in terms of municipalities and governments, but also with the private sector, because we want to do more to ensure that we're retaining and attracting top talent here at the city. And with that in mind, we did a first phase of the compensation study for more managerial levels, and that was approved by City Council. And now, we have completed the second phase, and that is what's being proposed tonight, as well as, I think, perhaps some adjustments to the first phase pay bans, but I'll allow you to get into that, Director Drakovich.
Thank you very much. Good evening. So, as the mayor had said, on January 23rd of this year, City Council approved Phase 1, which included pay bands 11 through 17, which were the leadership positions, directors and managers. Since then, HR received approval to purchase a comp analyst, which is another forum to look at pay rates in the public and private sector, as a salary tool to ensure that we are collecting data for salaries outside of the municipalities, because we do have competitors that are just not municipalities, and we want to remain competitive. With this additional resource and the information that had already been provided to HR, such as from GovHR, we were able to update the bands that you have before you for positions and complete Phase 2. Provided to you today are the results, which you would see in your packet. Also, in the partnership with our HR consultant, Shannon, along with comp analyst and GovHR recommendations, we added additional 25% to the back end of the bands. This is due to increasingly hard-to-fill positions and specialized positions. This also will allow for the bands to last longer across the city. So, today, I am asking you for the approval of the completed bands and the 25% extension.
Okay, that motion is before us. Speakers list open, Councilman Rutherford.
Just one question. When would these individuals see the increase? Because a lot of them have been waiting patiently, and this will directly affect their livelihood. So, what's the actual, like, if we vote on this today, does it go in effect tomorrow?
Well, according to the resolution, they have the first full pay period in May. That was on the resolution, but if it's decided other, I'd be more than happy to entertain that and go with that.
So, for me, I would like for it to be immediately, and that's just something I'm going to ask. I'll ask if I can do a motion on it.
If we want to start changing that on the floor, I mean, we'll postpone it for a week, because I don't know if that's even eligible.
Okay, I'm just asking. Is it eligible if it's not?
I mean, it's, today is April 23rd. I don't know when the pay cycle changes. Madam Director?
I've already prepared my team to start the letters and the forms to be available and ready to be processed for next payroll, which is on Thursday, next Thursday.
Next Thursday, May 2nd. So, that would be when it goes into effect?
That's when they will see it on their pay period, I'm sorry, on their paycheck. So, we can make it effective this pay period, which ends on Saturday, and then the pay is on Thursday of next week. And I've prepared my team already to start the letters and the forms to get those processed, if you so desire to be on next pay.
What's the implementation of what's before us, what's been written?
Well, like I said, they did say the first pay period in May, which would be two weeks from Thursday. And, like I said, I will be more than happy to make it work, if you would like to see it on next pay.
Okay, so the administration has provided a timeline, and it sounds like others in the administration are able to change it. Here's what the resolution reads. Resolution to approve the compensation wage study Phase 2 job scoring and pay bans. Whereas the City of Pontiac engaged with Clark Hill Law Firm and GovHR to complete a wage and compensation study for all city positions, and whereas City Council previously approved new pay bans for directors and managers earlier this year, and whereas the results from the compensation study also proposed the creation of job classification rankings and pay bans for administrative and support staff, and whereas the city positions have been given a new score and placed within the new pay bands, and whereas wage increases may result in accordance with the study findings for current employees and new hires. Now, therefore, it is resolved that the Pontiac City Council adopts the job scoring and pay bans for Phase 2 of the wage and compensation study, and be it further resolved, the City Council authorizes the executive branch to do all things necessary to have the respective increases take effect in the first full pay period in May 2024. Does the mayor and deputy mayor's understanding of the first full pay period in May 2024 mean when it concludes, or when it's all fully in May? You wrote it, so tell me what you want it to do.
Yeah, our understanding, as the director has indicated, is that it would be the first full pay period that occurs in May, in other words, that two-week time period that is entirely within May, which means it would be the two-week time period that concludes on May 16th.
Okay, so the resolution as it stands now, city employees impacted would see for their May 2nd through May 16th pay period, because is it a two-week period?
Yes.
That's the cycle? That's, so essentially, it goes into effect May 2nd. May 2nd is when they see a pay change. Councilman Rutherford has invoked the question of immediate, presumably meaning tomorrow. Tomorrow is April 24th, so that's in the middle of an existing pay period, which runs from... What day did the current pay period start?
Can't recall, but I know it ends, I believe it was on Saturday of this week, so two weeks away from there, on that Sunday. I don't have the date. If anybody has a calendar, I'd be more than happy to.
So, if I said Saturday of this week, would that make it better?
I don't even know what the days are of this current pay window. I mean, so if the next pay window is May 2nd to May 16th, I would have assumed the current pay window would end May 1st, but it sounds like that might not be the case. We're going to keep the speakers list. We'll see if we can get to a resolution or a solution, but Councilman Parker is next on the speakers list.
Thank you, Representative President. My question is, as we've looked at these pay bands and recognize that some of our employees was being underpaid, is there going to be retro pay?
That has not been discussed, if there's going to be retro pay.
All right, so what's before us is a resolution. Does somebody have an amendment with specific days in mind?
I have an amendment, and I want to explain it before I make it. When we did these increases to us, to the administration, everybody's got there, everybody got there as immediate. These individuals have been waiting, and I know it might seem like I'm just being, like, picking, but I'm not. They've waited patiently. They've watched their directors get raises, everybody happy. They deserve a little happiness, too, and that's why I want this amendment to go into effect immediately. That's the purpose of why I'm asking. If it doesn't pass, they can't say I didn't ask, and then they got to wait to this. The mic went off. I can only ask that it goes into effect immediately, and that's the reason why I'm doing so.
I'm cool with the spirit of immediate effect, or now-ish effect. I just don't have supreme confidence that the administration will be able to implement that and it not mess up the pay for everybody when they do it in the middle of a week, in the middle of a pay period. You know what I mean?
I understand.
I'd rather it be done right versus... But, as a point of information, City Council did not authorize or begin our compensation. That was changed by state law, the local officer's compensation.
And as a point of information, I got that, but it's just the fact that people did get increases, and everybody deserves to be paid fairly, and that's what it is, whether it was us that started or the local compensation. We don't got to try to be politic, we don't have to play politics with this. I'm simply saying, everybody got paid, these people should too. Don't, don't...
I'm not trying to play politics. You said "we," so I just want to clarify that...
No, sir, I wasn't talking about you. There was a reason why I said that. It was not you. I apologize. That's it.
All right, Mayor, you had a hand on this matter of discussion?
Well, I think you summed it up. It's just, I don't think any of the previous pay increases went into effect in the middle of a pay period, and what we're proposing is they would go into effect at the very next pay period.
Further discussion? There was, a motion was offered or invoked. Was there a second? I hear no second, so we're still at the main resolution. Clerk Doyle, you have a question?
So, actually, the resolution has to be amended, because the ranges of the pay bands were changed, and the resolution only makes reference to Phase 2. So, the amendments also affected Phase 1, so that needs to be referenced in the resolution.
Okay, so Clerk Doyle is invoking the attachment in terms of the various bands. It shows the... Clarify your question, please.
So, there were ranges that were passed, I think, back in January or February? Right, these ranges, the maximum for the managers and leadership ranges has increased. So, that needs to be referenced in the resolution.
Yeah, administration plopped this down before City Council. Do you have any proposed language with what you plopped down?
Certainly. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Pontiac City Council adopts the job scoring and pay bans for Phase 2 and also Phase 1 of the wage and compensation study.
Okay, so the solution is that the first, therefore be it resolved, be amended to state both Phase 1 and Phase 2, just to be all encompassing of all changes. Is there a City Council member that moves to amend the first resolve, so it states Phase 1 and Phase 2 versus just currently Phase 2?
I make a motion.
Is there a...
I'm sorry. Shouldn't it reference the increase to the pay bands that were in effect? Because they weren't, they weren't initially there, so...
The second resolved currently reads, be it further resolved that the Pontiac City Council authorizes the executive branch to do all things necessary to have the respective increases take effect in the first full pay period. So, would that, to have the respective increases, meaning if we amend it, not just for Phase 2, but for Phase 1 and 2? Do you feel as though that is sufficient?
Okay, I just want to...
Does the administration's position is that that is sufficient?
I believe it's sufficient. The mayor believes it's sufficient.
Okay, the clerk has raised the question. The administration has offered the language. It's been moved by Councilwoman James, seconded by Councilwoman Goodman, that we amend the first resolve to say Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the wage and compensation study. Any discussion on the motion? It's amending right now the first resolved. Everyone clear on the change, Council? That's the one amendment before us. Yeah, making it so it reads Phase 1 and Phase 2.
What was the, what he added, what Deputy Mayor added?
That's the same change that I've said. I just removed a few commas and words.
Can we read, before we vote on it, just read the complete statement as amended?
As in that, those last two resolved?
Yes, just the one.
Okay, now, if this amendment passes, it would read, now therefore it is resolved that the Pontiac City Council adopts the job scoring and pay bands for Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the wage and compensation study, and... The bulk of Phase 1 changes had been done by City Council a few weeks prior, and this just incorporates any final changes to that Phase 1, if this amendment passes. Any further discussion or clarification? Speakers list exhausted. Roll call on adoption. Clerk Doyle for the amendment.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Five yeas, no nays.
Okay, that change is made. Now, the question becomes, it's been invoked, is there any amendments or changes that are proposed that will be moved or seconded in terms of the time, the timing of the implementation? All right, hearing nothing further, Councilman Goodman?
So, excuse me, this question has been asked, if I have been paying attention closely. Is there any way to make any of this pay retroactive for people who have been fulfilling these roles?
It was meant, the question was asked about, is it retroactive? The answer was not currently. Does the mayor administration have any other answer to the broader question of can it or may it?
Well, there's probably some legal question about that. We wouldn't recommend that. We think putting it in effect for the pay period that starts in roughly a week is appropriate and prompt, and that's what we would recommend.
Okay, you're not saying anything else, Councilman Rutherford?
Why was this recommended from the administration? I want you to elaborate on it, why you think it's appropriate. I yield to the administration.
Meaning the starting when it starts?
No, meaning why wasn't it...
Retroactive?
Why wasn't it considered for retroactive? I want it to be elaborated on, why we're not doing it.
Well, in part because we didn't do that for Phase 1, in part because we think that sets a difficult precedent in terms of employees asking for pay increases and wanting them to be retroactive for work that's already been done.
Any final discussion on the motion before us? Usually, I wouldn't want to make a number of changes like that on the floor, but I don't want to kick the can and then potentially jeopardize it, taking even another pay period to go into effect. So, what we have before us is approving the compensation wage study, job scoring and pay bans, and authorizing it to take into effect the first full pay period in May, which starts, according to the HR director, May 2nd. Any further discussion, clarification? Councilman Rutherford?
And the technical support with the score, and this is a question for you, is that the right score that you guys have it as?
Could you repeat that position, so I can take a look?
I don't know what feels, what is he, what is his, let me make sure I read it right. So, I'm looking at, in technical, it's a note 10 or 11?
Planning technician?
No.
Is it planning?
No, it's community, maybe I'm reading it wrong. I'm sorry. Hold on one second.
Is it in 10, the Community Development Tech, that one?
Yeah, that's correct.
GIS technician?
Yes.
There's Community Development Technician, GIS Technician. Those are the two technicians that are in pay band 10.
Is that correct?
According to the JAQs that were completed by the employees and the interviews by GovHR, that is where they placed them in the bands.
And so, my question to you is, if any time we wanted to change it, could we change it? Not today, but...
By resolution, yes.
Yeah, by, okay, I'll do the resolution next. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further discussion on the motion before us? Speakers list exhausted. Roll call on adoption of the resolution as amended. Clerk Doyle?
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Five yeas, no nays.
All right, that resolution is adopted. We're now at public comment.
Dr. Deidre Waterman. Follow-up would be Mr. Robert Bass.
And if he's not here, who's after that?
It would be the lovely, illustrious Kimara Mayberry from, yeah, that's my, she's illustrious, that's what I call her. So, from Zeta Phi Beta Incorporated, so we'll repeat her, from the Lambda Theta, I can't say the last part. Lambda Rhodzeta. Okay, I did that. Deidre, you are, ma'am. Go ahead, ma'am.
I'm having to make public comment about the items on the agenda which follow this, if you've done a discussion, so I'm making comment, even though I'm waiting to hear what the discussion is about those. One of those is the increased pension payments for our retirees. I know you voted on that last week, and you're asking the mayor now to present a proposal on how long it's going to take to get those. That was a question the retirees were answering. And I might just put whatever he says, and I guess all the things, including making it retroactive, which would be, as I calculated, for to last week, would be 11,000 plus per retiree, so they'd be happy to get that. So, I assume the mayor thinks that that's payable, because he did not bid with the resolution that you passed. But I would like to remind people, the retirees, that had this been done and followed the plan that I set forth during my administration to increase the retirees' pension benefits monthly, that it would have taken six to eight weeks to get the necessary actuarial study, which is required by state law, and they would have had it six to eight weeks after they got health insurance, which is two years ago. So, that's the unfortunate part of it, but we'll see how long it will take to get this, and we'll be listening to the mayor's report on that. But the other agenda items relate to asking the mayor about all the managerial positions that are vacant in the city, and I mentioned those, and it, you know, it's... that are vacant in the city, and I mentioned those, and it, you know, it's, it's, the city has suffered from having major department heads vacations, positions vacant for so long. Of the five major departments that have been without department heads for so long, and the question is not just, you know, adding more and more people to fill the positions, but why are these people, good talent, good working people, walking away from this administration? All right. That is a more endemic and a more profound problem that you may have to answer. And I can answer it for some of them who come and talk about the fact that they don't want to be involved in the politics and the kind of poor management that goes on. So Finance Director, he was here just for a few months and left. The Economic Development Director, well, the first one who was here when I was here and now is at Oakland County, said she didn't like the atmosphere of the interrogation that was started, and so the fact that somebody came in and she was just kicked out of her office. So she said, "I don't need to be bothered here, I'm getting out of here." The HR Directors, I talked about those who have left, you know, and the last one sued, was going to sue the city, so you had to pay her off $33,000. So this is an endemic problem. I really think that you need to counsel, you can't administer, but be aware of the fact that this not, is not a problem that you can just throw some money at. This is more endemic, and it speaks to the administration, how this administration is functioning.
Ms. Mayberry, you are next, and after that would be Ms. Jamison.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. My name is Kimara Mayberry. I'm the President of the Lambda Ro Zeta Chapter of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, and we wanted to give a little information that really complements the improvements from a structural standpoint for what Habitat for Humanity is doing, but what we want to do is highlight the interconnected issue of quality indoor air, quality in homes and buildings, and how we can be plagued by harmful pollutants if our homes and our buildings aren't energy efficient, or if there are gas appliances in those structures. Zeta Phi Beta Sorority, particularly our chapters, have partnered with the Midwest Building Decarbonization Coalition in an effort to eliminate fossil fuels in buildings, meaning gas, oil and coal before 2050. The Home Energy Rebates Program includes $8.8 billion in grant funding to help American households save money on energy bills, upgrade to clean energy equipment, and improve energy efficiency, reduce indoor and outdoor air pollution, and create workforce training programs. The Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy recently announced the schedule of the public input sessions for Michiganders, and this is a vital step to ensure that no Michigan residents are left behind in this initiative. In the U.S. today, 26 million low-income households burn costly, health-damaging and climate-disrupting fossil fuels inside homes. Communities of color are disproportionately overburdened by pollution from these burning fossil fuels, as well as energy costs and poor air quality. This is due in part to structural racism throughout our housing and economic systems.
Excuse me, many of these communities are also highly vulnerable to the extreme weather events brought on by climate change. They lack comparable access to cooling and resilient infrastructure, as well as the financial means to relocate. In order to meet the country's climate goals and protect public health, we need to retrofit these homes through beneficial electrification. This report, Decarbonizing Homes: Improving Health in Low-Income Communities Through Beneficial Electrification, presents a holistic approach to electrifying housing in low-income communities. This approach will lower housing cost burdens, improve housing quality to create a safe and healthful indoor environment, reduce climate pollution, and enable buildings to more easily manage electricity demand. State and local governments can help deliver these benefits through bold action, particularly as the federal government considers investigating hundreds of billions of dollars to help out. The upcoming session, the next upcoming session is April 24th.
Order in the chambers. You're doing great, but you have the floor, so if there's any conver, no, no, just if there's any conversations in the audience, please cease them so that way the individual who has the time can continue presenting. You have the floor, you alone.
Okay. I can go ahead?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's always a struggle. I don't want to interrupt, but if, if the, if the noise keeps getting too intense, we got to reel it in. You have the floor.
Thank you. So the next upcoming session is April 24th at 10:30 a.m., 2:12 p.m., closing listening sessions, or you guys can reach out to MidwestDecar.org to get involved to eliminate indoor air pollution. And I'm sorry, my name, good evening, my name is Zai Jameson. I'm the President of the new chapter of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated at Oakland University, and that'll be all.
Thank you so much. Ma'am, point of it? No.
We got it, we got to keep public comment rolling. If you want to have a side conversation outside, that's okay. Councilwoman Rutherford, next up.
Yes, it would be Veronica Roberts. And somebody assist her, please. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. Hello, everybody. I'm here because I'm getting fed up with where I'm living at, and I'm not blaming Melanie, I'm not blaming nobody, but something has to, got to be done. The city inspected code enforcement HUD has been there several times, and I've been told, "You're blind, why are you here? You don't know nothing." So, the one manager we had, she said it to me, she called the police on me. They didn't do anything to me, but told her to stay away from me. She lied and said I hit her with my cane, and I didn't. You know, I no longer wanted to be there. I loved being there, I moved, first moved there. This has got to stop. There are people moving in and moving out the very same day. I'm trying to, with a couple other handicapped, we have a couple people with legs that are prosthetic, and we've been talking about seeing if we can get something, a building or something for the, for the handicapped, so we can have somewhere to go. Because another, we figured it out, and one handicap, no, can understand another handicap. Because every day is always somebody saying, "What are you guys going to do?" Talk to the mayor. I said, "I did that." So I mentioned to you, Mayor, that fundraisers, because I know that there is a fund for the handicapped. Once before, I asked another mayor, "What are you doing with the money?" I got told that the handicapped is the lone man on the totem pole. There is no totem pole for a handicap, because what happened to me was me, my vision in my back can happen to anybody. And I'm not looking for sympathy because I don't walk through it, because I got sent home, saying I'll never walk again, and I'm walking. All I can do now is hold my head up like I've been holding my head up, because there's nothing going to stop me from coming up here and begging the city council and the mayors to do a fundraiser to get something done, so that we have something, somewhere to go in an, in an empty building down here, or use the bowling center or somewhere where we can go maybe once or twice a week. But, you know, I've had to, I had a situation in my apartment where a fight broke out, and I paid for my door to be put back.
I'm sorry, that's your time, sweetheart. Thank you. Florence Etipia, and then after that will be Ms. Rosalyn Northcross.
I'm going to continue to talk about noise, and it's also taking place in my home in Auburn Hills. It is in the Pontiac School District, and I had DTE come in because it was, it hurts you physically. Memory loss, difficulty focusing, pain, and they came out and, they came in my home, but it's kind of interesting, the buzzing sound disappeared when DTE was there, but I'll keep going on, and, but after they left, it came back. But what he did, he was in my home and he went around, and he noticed that, that there are transformers in, on the grounds in my condo association. He said, "What I want you to do when you hear the noise, go out and see if you hear something from those transformers." I said, "Is that what they are? I thought they were junk." I didn't know what that was out there, like six of them. I thought the transformers are what you have in Pontiac on those telephone poles. They said that possibly a cable, everything was underground, because all you have is this metal box. But in a, on western area, you know, off of Bagley where new homes are, they have the same kind of transformers I have, and with all of the new 5G, all that new stuff up there, everybody's noticed that. Anyway, one of the things, when I called DTE to talk with a woman, she was serious. She said, "Is transformers on a pole in your backyard?" I said, "No, it's not, you must be talking about other places." She said, "Did you see any light, flashing light?" I said, "No." She said, "Did you see here explosion?" I said, "No." She said, "What about burning?" I said, "You're thinking about those transformers on telephone poles in people's backyard." But some people in the city don't have any transformers. I don't, I don't understand all of it, but what I am saying, HIPAA is involved with this because it is a problem for factories, because if the decibel is high, workers over time will lose their hearing, and that's been documented in the factories in Pontiac and...
That is your time.
Next time, because I should have more information. Those transformers in my...
Next speaker is up. Next speaker is up.
Ms. Northcross?
Over $300,000 for each one.
Order in the chambers? Order in the chambers, Ms. Northcross has the floor. Order in the chambers, Ms. Northcross is up.
Good evening, everyone. The cars that go around M1 accelerate, decelerate, make squealing noises, make breaking noises, all kinds of sounds, and these sounds are impacting the people who live nearby, to a degree where it makes it difficult for them sometimes to sleep and carry on just regular activities. I am happy to report that M1 has received a ticket for exceeding the decibel levels in the city's ordinance. But I'm here primarily because M1 is also expanding, and their expansion plan will be coming before the planning commission, they'll be, it was postponed, and they're taking it up at their May 1st meeting. And the sounds that we currently hear will be reflected from the buildings that are being constructed. No one knows how that is going to impact the people living by, this reflected sound, and the only way we can know is if a sound study is conducted, and one has resisted doing that. Only the planning commission can require that M1 conducts a sound study. And so we need the members of the community who have been affected by this sound to come out to the planning commission's meeting on May 1st, which is Wednesday, 6:00 p.m. here in the council chambers, to ask the planning commission to not approve, to delay the approval of that plan until the sound study has been collected, has been done, so that we know how that reflected noise is going to affect nearby residents. And also, we want the planning commission to require that M1 include how they are going to mitigate this reflected sound in their site plan. So neighbors, residents, next Wednesday, 6:00 p.m., May 1st, we really need your support if you've been impacted by the current sound. Who knows how you will be impacted by the reflected sound if it is approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlton Jones, and then after that will be Ms. Darlene Clark, and then after that will be Ms. Gloria Miller.
Let me just say, I just have to commend Councilwoman Rutherford. I know being a legislator is not easy, but what is really important is that you all are the final say-so's for the spending of revenues. And when I came up here agenda, I said there were several items on there that need to be really reviewed. I had a lot of questions, and I would just commend her for just questioning some things that, how it's being done, and maybe the administration just needs some help in adjusting it before we approve it. But I think you have to, you have to as legislators, step up and thoroughly understand when you start talking about budget changing, moving funds, because we know when we had a financial person come from the state, it says because we had a lot of issues that weren't being handled properly. Now, I'm just saying it because I looked at it, I had a lot of questions, and so Councilwoman Rutherford, I appreciate you at least taking a stance to say, "I want to get some clarity on it." But I want to say too, the young ladies who came here and talked about clean energy, healthy climate, I hope you guys remember that that is the area that TDC has taken on in the forefront. Midwest Carbonation, we're working hand in hand with them. You may not have heard of doing a whole lot of things, but we're working real hard because Pontiac, Pontiac in Oakland County is the premier Justice 40 community. What that means is when federal dollars come down into a Justice 40 area, there is 40% of those funds have to be addressed to Justice 40 areas. We are a disadvantaged community. We need to be truly engaged in workforce development, developing our resources to make sure we can take advantage at full advantage. I'm looking for the day when we have architects, engineers, that come like the high percentage of our people who live here. We have black and brown people here by 70%, and there's no reason that they can't be engaged and trained to be architects, to be engineers, to be planners. And especially, if you look at the statistics, our black males don't get opportunity as much as they, I want to say, Tanisha Taylor, when she brought here today, we need to complement that and complement it with the enrichment programs that we're doing with TDC and Cartney Group. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. It will be Darlene Clark and Gloria Miller.
Thank you, Darlene Clark. Again, Ms. Rutherford, you know, you surprised a lot of people, and the one thing I noticed, what I really, I didn't give you credit for, you do have compassion for the disadvantaged, the elderly and the retirees, and thank you for that. But let's make this clear, because Ms. Veronica Robertson and I grew up together. We ate out of each other.
We ate out of each other's house. The apartments that she's speaking on is called the Phoenix Place Apartments. This next to the urban, the phoenix that's getting ready to be destroyed. This is how she's being treated. And one thing about the South Side people, she tells me East Side too, we are family. Okay? Now, let's go back to what my, my original conversation is supposed to be about. Let me give you clarity. For the gurds, March the 20th of this month, of March of 2024, a notice to appear was filed in a federal court. On April 23rd today, discovery plan was filed. Let me say this, in Judge Lawson, David Lawson's courthouse. Case number 2410287. Thank you, Mayor, for saying that you are going to look forward to making sure these people have, these retirees, General Hospital and the city get what is rightfully due to them. Because without General Hospital, the city would have went fully bankrupt. So case number 2410287, at the Theodore Lawson United State Courthouse, 231 West Lafayette Boulevard, Detroit, Michigan, phone number 313-234-5000. Get that case number. Now, on April 30th, it is not open to the public. It's only for attorneys and the judge onlys to meet in his chambers. But by the mayor's being transparent at what the action is, I'm quite sure he does not mind me to bring us the focus. And another question that I have for the mayor that's very important is that in the process of the budget that comes for taxpayers to pay more taxes, they need to have clarity on how that process is done. Also, there's some question is that you're buying from the meters to vehicles, you reissue, you approve them once, now you're getting ready to reapprove them again. Help the residents to understand your motive and behind, even though they fail, help them to understand.
Thank you, Gloria Miller. And that will be the end of our public comment.
Thank you. You know, when I come down on certain Tuesday, I have things I want to speak on and something always gets me off of it, you know? When this lady walked up and talked about her condition, that broke my heart. Because that could be my mother, but she's gone. You hurt ma'am, I hurt. You know, I'm not going to throw fault at anybody, but I do, I will say there's something to be done. Now, we're talking about the Phoenix, it's just ironic that she came down here today because I got some calls today. See, I get a hold of everything. People called me. And they spoke about the Phoenix Center. Actually, they are asking for people for documentation because they're under new management. And if they don't come up with the documentation of when they initially moved in, their rent is going to go from 200 to 800. These are issues, these are real issues. This is real. So what's going to happen to these people if they don't come up with this money? They're going to kick them out. The hell if they do, if I'm here. And I also heard Kara Circle having the same problem. What is going on with all the apartment in the low income in the city? We got to ask ourselves, what's going on here? This is sad. This lady said you're crying. She said they talk to her like she's dirt in there. The elevator's not working. This is not even from her, this is the message. And I don't reveal my sources. I keep telling people, I'm all over this city. I've been all over for years. If it's something going to get out, Gloria gonna get it. And I will leave my house to get it. The elevators are not working. I hear water underneath, they stepping in water in the building. There are infestation. Up under your feet. Oh my God. That's why I said, we can't say anything until the least of us in this city is doing good. Carlton, yes, y'all young people, a lot of things wouldn't happen with these young people if they had jobs and had hope, if they had TDC. That occurred crime because they have no hope. All our kids are not bad, they just don't have no hope. Because you're down here asking to be inclusive, to put some of these kids, these young beings to work in the city so we can stop committing crimes. We can come down here and brag about what we do all day. It don't mean a damn thing if we got someone sitting in the audience like that, don't know where she's going and crying. We got to look into what's going on with these low income apartments in the city of Pontiac. I keep saying it before and I mentioned it last week, Oakland County is coming downtown. You think they're going to live next to that? They're going to take them out.
That does conclude your time.
And it's time for a citizen stand up for them, y'all.
I have a question.
It's public comment. We're at public.
We're done with public comment. I have a point of information. I'll ask you.
So point, public comment, there's no further speakers on public comment, but you have a point of information.
I'm just trying to get some clarity. We have discussion items, I know we can't add, but is there any way that I could talk to the administration about what's going on at the Phoenix Center since you guys have been handling those meetings with enforcement? Because I have no idea about any of this that's going on. This is all new to me.
Point of information has been made. The mayor may bring it up, but then you'll also have your closing comments.
Yeah, I'm going to do it in close. Okay. Thank you.
So discussions happen after public comments, not because we, we want to make sure that public comments happen a little bit earlier. So if our discussions were also in front of public comments, that would push it later. So not every week has discussions. But the first is roof ramp and repair program for Habitat for Humanity. Councilwoman Rutherford wanted to make sure that this information got to the community. Almost every part of Pontiac is eligible for this and it's, you know, apply for a limited amount of grant money while it's, it's available. There is a map that shows what parts of the city is eligible. Almost all of Pontiac is eligible for this Habitat for Humanity program. I want to give the floor to Councilman Rutherford.
Wow, we're talking about housing, roof and repairs. Let me tell you why this is important. This is $25,000 worth of repairs. $25,000 worth of repairs. You can go on www.habitatoclean.org. The applications are first come, first served. The importance of this is this, they are not going by the city of Pontiac income, they're going by the Oakland County based income. Which means what you don't qualify with the city programs, you absolutely will qualify with the county's income guidelines. It is first come, first served. It is so important that you guys use these projects. And they are really based upon the areas. If you look at the map when you go online, it would tell you if you are eligible. I think almost everybody eligible that's in those numbers that they have. So I've been putting it out in my community meetings, I've been putting it out online. And I think I pass it to all our community leaders that they can attest to that. If you know someone that needs home repairs, we're talking about, we're not just talking about the roofs or the ramps, we're talking about AC, we're talking about central, excuse me, air conditioner units, we're talking about heating, we're talking about if you have a sub pump in your basement, you can use that $25,000 to repair all. So even if you say, well, I make 90,000 a year, I promise you, you qualify. So go and get on there and get your money. So get your money.
Yeah, the highest priority category of repairs is roof repairs or replacement, heating systems that are non-emergency, they have other funding for emergency repairs, plumbing, which includes well, septic, sewer, interior waste and water lines, water heater, electrical hazards, windows, entrance doors, municipal code violations, including removing garages, sheds or pools for health or safety reasons, remediation of lead-based paint, accessibility improvements, including ramps, stand-up showers, handicap bars, et cetera. Medium priority is exterior porches, steps, railings and decks, waterproofing of basements or crawl spaces, and low priority projects of exterior walls, repair of siding, interior walls, floors and ceilings, kitchens, bathrooms and insulation. So that's a whole lot of projects. And Councilwoman Melanie Rutherford is such a Swiss Army knife of resources, she was whipping off that correct website from the top of her head. That's habitatoclean.org. You can contact the city council offices if you need further detail maneuvering it. But just really quickly, a limited amount of grant money will be available and is distributed to eligible households based on the following guidelines. The home must be a single-family owner occupied dwelling. The home must be located in one of the qualified areas, about 80% of Pontiac is in those qualified areas. The repair is estimated to cost less than $25,000. Priority is given to seniors 62 years and older. Doesn't mean that you must be 62 years or older, but that's the priority age demographic they hope to serve. To serve, the program will be first come, first served, determined by a completed application. So while we of course have the city's home repair program, as the councilwoman identified, this can be open to more folks.
And also, I want you guys to be paying attention to other organizations because there is funding coming down from the state level for home repairs. So I don't want anyone to lose heart. I can say this because I have benefited from Oakland Saves, if you guys didn't know about that in January, my house has been redone because of those programs. And everybody is first come, first served. So if you on my Facebook or if you're on one of our colleagues, one of my councilmen, we put everything up so that you guys can see it. And if you can't reach out to me, you can always reach out to the president. So please go apply. Please. Thank you.
And what we've shared with you is all identified right at habitat, habitatoclean.org. But the city council staff and council members are happy to help you negotiate and maneuver that. We want to make sure you got that information while it was still eligible, while the funding still existed. Any final discussion on that item? Okay. The next, has the Cipria attorney provided a latest response to the city on the finalization of terms for an agreement for the city of Pontiac retirees pension funding reinforcement, retiree healthcare funding reinforcement and restoration of retiree benefits stipends? Based on the conversation when the city council voted last week to state where we stood, the mayor had offered that there was, we're waiting for an answer and expecting it very soon. So mayor updates for the council and community.
Yeah, thank you. So as I said last week, the substance of the terms of the agreement had all been finalized, but there were a couple of points where the attorneys were discussing the legal terminology, the legalese, if you will, of a couple of paragraphs of the terms of the agreement. And as I said last week, we expected that to be resolved shortly. And we were waiting on Cipria's attorney to send us proposed language. They did send us that proposed language. The attorney for Cipria and the attorney for the city worked out that language. And so the terms of an agreement have now been finalized. I actually have signed that, what's called a term sheet, and it has been sent to Cipria's attorney. And Cipria's attorney has said that they're going to put that before the membership of Cipria for a vote. So we really are now in the home stretch, as I indicated last week. And at this point, oh, the other thing I should mention, since it came up last week and again tonight, is we had long been proposing to include retroactive pay of that $400 stipend over the past roughly two years. And so if and when the Cipria membership votes to approve these terms, and once the judge approves it, then they will get roughly $10,000 in retroactive stipends. So this is a big deal. This is very good news. And as soon as Cipria's membership votes to approve this, we'll be on our way.
Thank you. A quick follow-up, Mayor Grimal. It's been referenced how there might be state requirements for updated actuarial studies. Is there any work that the council needs to do now to sort of get that ball rolling so that way when there's sort of a final agreement before us, we don't then say, oh, that's six to eight weeks or whatever that period is for the reinstatement of benefits or for any other action? Can you give us an update? I know that there were various different actuals, aerial studies. Do you anticipate any new ones will be needed for any element of these that the city should be initiating?
I don't believe so, but I did pose that question to the city's attorneys yesterday and they're double and triple checking. So if there's anything that is needed, we do want to get that ball rolling immediately. But I'm still waiting on a final answer from the city's attorneys.
Okay, the city council will be eager to have that answer as well. Further discussion, and we'll keep bringing this up each week so we can follow the latest twists and turns. Councilman Rutherford?
So what is the turnaround rate of Cipria voting on this particular item?
Mayor Grimal, do you have a sense of how long they put that out there?
I don't. It's really a question for Cipria and I don't know the answer.
So we could try and find that out ahead of next week.
If you could, thank you.
All right, further discussion on this latest status update? And we'll keep monitoring and bringing it up weekly? All right. All right, we're at number 10. Does the city have a finance director yet? This was a question we asked last week. Well, last week we asked, what's the plan? And each week we'll ask, do we have one yet? Mayor Grimal.
Well, two things. First, as council is aware, we engaged a search firm, Gov HR, about two months ago now. And they have been looking for finance directors. That opening, that posting, if you will, closes next week. They have two very promising candidates that they are recommending for interviews. There may be others as well, since it doesn't close until next week. But they do have two candidates that they're very interested in. In the meantime, Saker Bawa has been named the acting finance director and is running the day-to-day operations of that department.
Further discussion on that latest update? Councilwoman Rutherford?
Well, I applaud the administration for putting these, these things into action. My question is, prior to him running it, who was running the day-to-day for the finance department?
And you yield to the.
And I yield to the administration.
Mayor Grimal.
Yeah, I believe that he was, for all intents and purposes, although I also know that the deputy mayor was spending more time there than would be typical to assist the operations of the department. But I want to defer to the deputy mayor for clarity.
Thank you, Mayor. For clarity, beginning in, I want to say February, Mr. Bawa had increased duties but was not technically the interim finance director. So I was still technically the interim finance director. He is now the interim finance director and is not only have, does not only have increased duties, but has the total responsibility.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Any final discussion? We'll keep raising this question. All right, thank you. Next, number 11. Does the city have a Department of Public Works director yet? The mayor spoke to it to a degree, but want to give you the floor, Mayor Grimal, for further context.
Yeah, I want to add some additional details. So as I mentioned yesterday, a candidate did accept our job offer. We're very excited about that. This is a highly qualified candidate who has served as the director of DPWs in a number of other municipalities. As the deputy mayor indicated, until that person comes on board, we now have a consulting firm that council voted to engage with tonight. And that consulting firm will be heavily involved until this candidate comes on board and beyond, because we anticipate that that consulting firm will help with the transition and help bring the new DPW director up to speed even after that DPW director is hired. I want to provide a few additional details in terms of the timeline here. The candidate is actually on vacation next week. So we will be bringing him before city council the following week for approval, since any department director hire has to be approved by city council. And his start date, I had said 30 days, that's not exactly right, it's roughly 30 days. His start date actually is anticipated to be June 10.
Contingent on city council approval.
That's right.
Further discussion on this topic? Thank you very much. We'll keep revisiting the question. We're now at number 12. Does the city have a grants and philanthropy director yet? Mayor Grimal.
The answer is no, although we do have an acting director in Renee Hall. In terms of a permanent director, I think as our human resources director mentioned last week, we've conducted five interviews for the position. We have another interview scheduled for next week. And there are two additional candidates that we're working to schedule interviews with.
Councilman Rutherford?
In the interim, I'm hoping that the administration gives Renee an opportunity to show what she can do. I've had the privilege of working with her on several things and I just want her to be given a fair chance and treated fairly like we treated the previous director. That's it.
Further discussion on grants and philanthropy director? All right, we'll continue revisiting this question. We're now at number 13. The city councils, one of our top priorities for this calendar year is making sure that the American Rescue Plan funds are effectively coordinated, corralled, obligated, used to benefit the citizens and therefore not lost and have to return back. Does the city have an American Rescue Plan coordinator yet or identified internal coordination process? Mayor Grimal, what's the latest?
Yeah, certainly Robert Englund coming on board will help with the DPW side of ARPA dollars. But as you know, tonight, city council did approve the establishment of some positions specifically dedicated to this. And we've already been putting feelers out about possible candidates to fill those roles.
Okay. Any further discussion? We'll keep bringing it up each week to make sure the high priority keeps moving forward. Here, no further discussion. That concludes discussions. We're now at communications. I'll just give you a rundown of what's happening between now and next week's city council meeting. At UWM, there's a first-time homebuyer event tomorrow, Wednesday, the 24th, in the evening, and that's at UWM Sports Complex on South Boulevard. On Thursday, the 25th, there's a town hall meeting. All are invited. Its preliminary renderings will be on hand for the proposed improvements to mini parks and neighborhood parks in our city. That's Thursday, the 25th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at New Mount Moriah. Also on that day, at 6:00 p.m. is the District Four monthly meeting with Councilwoman James. That evening, also on the 20, Thursday, the 25th, is the District Six monthly meeting with Pro Tem Carrington. That District Four meeting is at New Mount Moriah. That District Five meeting, excuse me, District Six meeting is at Ruth Peterson Senior Center. On Friday, the 26th, Micah Six Community has their Garden of Cocktails fundraiser in the evening at Goldner Walsh. On Saturday, the 27th, the Huron Corridor Earth Day cleanup in District Two is happening from 9:00 a.m. to noon, meeting at Indian Village Park. 40 West Howard has an artist's spring open house. That artist's location is on West Howard Street. That's on Saturday, the 27th, from 1:00 to 7:00 p.m. In District Six, Pro Tem Carrington has a cleanup on that Saturday, the April 27th, starting at 9:30 a.m., and that's at Charlie Harrison Park across from Shiloh Baptist Church on University Drive. Also on Saturday is the District One community meeting. That's taking place at the Pontiac Creative Arts Center, 3:00 p.m., 47 William Street, the Pontiac Creative Arts Center this month. Free landfill days for Pontiac residents continues on Saturday, the 27th of April, and Saturday, the 4th of May. Councilman McHale Goodman on Sunday, April 28th, has his pullover prevention clinic, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Baldwin Center. Also that next day, Councilman Goodman has District Three's monthly meeting on Monday, the 29th, 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Baldwin Center. So there's a rundown of some of the many activities happening in our community between now and next week's city council meeting. Mayor Grimal, let me see, you have one communication you want to share?
Yeah, just one, as a matter of fact, and that is, again, I want to remind local residents who own businesses, businesses and their owners who are based here in Pontiac, that we do want to make sure that we're contracting as the city with more Pontiac-based businesses. So in that vein, we have started organizing a series of supplier connect events. We actually have had three of those over the past three months already. We have an additional one coming up in May, and that is on May 17th, excuse me, from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. right here in city council chambers. So again, the next supplier connect event is Friday, May 17th, from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. right here in city council chambers. So if you're interested in contracting and doing business with the city, please come on out and learn about how to go about doing that.
Thank you. Your closing comments, Mayor Grimal?
Yeah, I want to speak specifically to the situation at Phoenix Place Apartments, because this is and has been a very serious problem. It's not the only problem landlord we have in the community, but it is one of the more problematic ones. And I, this problem has been going on to various degrees for a long time, and our code enforcement has gone to court against the landlord and the management company. We are struggling to deal with them and really get enforcement actions against them, but I can assure people that code enforcement is on top of this. I have personally met with the management company and emphasized to them how completely unacceptable their conduct is. This goes back, that meeting was, oh, a month or two ago now. I don't know the very latest, as expressed tonight by a resident there, any more than Councilwoman Rutherford does, but I will look into the latest updates immediately tomorrow. But I know Councilwoman Rutherford has been kept in the loop in the past months by our code enforcement. I will certainly work with Councilwoman Rutherford and our code enforcement to get the latest, but we are doing everything we can to hold landlords across this city accountable, including the landlord at Phoenix Place Apartments. But like so many landlords, it's a privately-owned complex, a private landlord.
Deputy Mayor Stevens, any comments?
Yes, thank you. I'll be brief. First, I can't pass up the opportunity to wish a happy Capiversary to the good brothers of the Kane Trio. And then also, I want to thank the fine sisters of Sigma for showing up tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Doyle, any closing comments? Councilman Parker, closing comments?
No comments.
Councilwoman James, closing comments?
Well, you have already announced them, but I think I'm going to take a moment to announce them again. Just want to remind everybody that, especially to those people who came out to the initial community engagement sessions that were held in 10 of our mini and neighborhood parks, and some of the people who attended those meetings are in the audience tonight. The designers have done their work and now have preliminary drawings that they want to show to the community. And the first showing will be at New Mount Moriah Church on Thursday. We're having an engagement session. It won't be like a meeting. The drawings will be on display. The designers will be there to talk to you, so you can just come in, take a look at what they've come up with. I'm sure they're going to have ways that you can make input, you know, putting stickers on what you like. I'm not sure exactly how they'll have it set up, but you'll have those two hours from 2:00 to 4:00 to just come in, look at the drawings, make input. Also, they will stay over for my meeting that will start at 6:00 o'clock, and at that time, you know, we'll, they'll have a chance to kind of talk to the community and, you know, share the community again. At my meeting, we'll be able to share input for the drawings that they will have created. So again, we want to invite everybody to come out. We'll have food, beverages, and I'm really looking forward to it. So please, if you are interested in seeing what has been designed for our mini and our neighborhood parks, please come out. And if you know others in the community that would want to come, please make sure they know that it's this Thursday, New Mount Moriah Church, 2:00 to 4:00, and then, or, excuse me, no.
4:00 to 6:00.
4:00 to 6:00, oh, excuse me, 4:00 to 6:00, and then at 6:00, we'll start our District Four Community Council meeting. And with that, good night.
Thank you. And thank you for all the work that you did on Earth Day and leading up to Earth Day. That was a great kickoff. And I hear there was a lot of progress made on Hawthorne, the Hawthorne Overgrowth Along Telegraph.
Yeah, we took a bite out of it.
Councilman Goodman?
I am very excited to announce repeatedly, the pullover prevention clinic that is happening the Sunday in my district. It is, I mean, simply put, a form of mutual aid as black and brown people. And as poor people, when we get pulled over by the police, it can typically escalate into other things. We recognize that pretext stops exist. So what this is for is to provide residents, and anyone else for that matter, a free headlight or taillight repair being done by the people at Shabbas Auto Care entirely for free. And on top of that, we'll also have other resources and tables available to anyone in the city and elsewhere, which includes some healthcare services, people from the Pontiac Promised Zone. Brian, I'm looking directly at you and I forget, the entirety of the Goodwill Employment Centers table. So we will have a bunch of resources. Honestly, at this point, I might have more people than I have tables, but we'll figure it out. I'd rather have more resources than less. So if you know anyone who needs that, please tell them to come to the Baldwin Center from 10:00 to 2:00 the Sunday. We'll also have free food. So if you come out for nothing else and you don't need anything fixed, come for free food. Outside of that, very excited to be able to complete some projects I'll be excited to tell you all about once some things are completely finalized this week. And I will be also be going out to my district meeting report, which, if you live in District Three or you're curious about what's happening in District Three, the following day after the pullover prevention clinic, the District Three meeting will also be held at the Baldwin Center from 5:00 to 6:00, where we will also have free food. So, and it won't be as expensive, but it will be free food nonetheless. So please do come out either for the event and the resources or just out to the district meeting. I look forward to seeing all of you there. And as always, if you need anything, as some residents have been doing this past week, more so than has probably happened ever since I've been in office, but I appreciate it. If you have any concerns or any issues that you think I can handle, please give me a call. It's been a good time, hopefully getting chickens out of people's neighborhoods and off of their garages. So again, if you need anything, please contact me. My city number is 248-758-3015. Again, that is 248-758-3015. That way, if you ever need to get in contact with me, you can't say you don't have my number. So please, have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Melanie Rutherford, District One.
To whom much is given, much will be required. That's Luke, Chapter 12, verse 48. I want to publicly apologize to the Phoenix Center Place Apartments. I want to apologize because I was so wrapped in making sure other people had fair and affordable and decent housing that I dropped the ball at the Phoenix Center Apartments, because it was under my impression that these things were handled. It was under my impression that it was meetings going on and things were being dealt with. And then I see a woman I've known most of my life walking here who said, Melanie, I ain't going to cause no trouble, but I like good trouble, because good trouble, I've learned, is the only way you get things accomplished around here. So I might have dropped the ball because I was trying to help with Lancaster with Pastor Parker, and I was involved with the Newman's, and I was involved with Willen High School. When I say baby is going down now, and I'm going to be heavily involved, and I'm going to ask real questions, and the same urgency that folks showed about Lancaster contacting HUD, it best be showed about the Phoenix Center Apartments, because it was an urgency when HUD was contacted. And the question is, has it been contacted at the Phoenix Center? It's an urgency when you have the most, the least of these being directly affected with their livelihood. People can't even get on elevators. People have trash. People have bugs. People have rats. And there was a season where I was trying to be fair and impartial. But when I say to you that I'm going to ask so many questions last week and have this on the agenda as a discussion item, and I'm hoping that I'm told, well, Mel, we might have didn't call HUD before, but we're going to call now, because if you know anything about me, I'm real good at getting my point across. So I want to apologize to Phoenix Center Place Apartments for Melanie Cherie Roosevelt. I dropped the ball, but I promise you, as my mama name is Muriel and my daddy name is Mark, I won't drop it again. I want to say that this is important to me because April is Fair Housing Month. It started April, the 11th, 1968, from the Lyndon B. Johnson administration. And the question that I am hearing in my head and in my heart is, is this fair housing? Is it right? So I am looking for this administration to drum up and sound the alarm to call HUD. Oh, yes, and I'm going to ask if they call HUD. And if they don't call HUD, then I'll call HUD, because we have to get some solutions. And that's not attacking them, that's putting them on notice. There is a difference. I want to also make sure you know that on Saturday, District One has their meetings. Oh, yes, it's going to be exciting. I hope that I see you there. It's 3:00 to 5:00 at the Creative Arts Center. You can ask those questions that I have about what's going on, about Bagley and Golf Drive and M1, and May the 1st is the meeting for the planning, so you can go there too. Last but certainly not least, I want to end on a positive note, because I told my daughter I wouldn't be positive. I gotta try to be. Today, I just found out the love of my life has been awarded the vice president position for the GSA at North Carolina Central, my daughter. So she's on the graduate chapter as the vice president. I think it's important that we highlight our kids. I try to highlight everybody, but especially mine, because I represent for the single parents out there who had nobody to help them, and she raised them, and we got it in the mud. So congratulations to Pontiac's own Mariah Taylor Roosevelt, who is now the vice president of the Graduate State Graduate Student Association for North Carolina Central, where she is majoring in two, two, library of science and a dual degree in law. And I say, God bless you, God keep you, God put your loving hands upon you, and if you need to reach me at any time, by 5:00 a.m., my phone number directly is 248-758-3017. And everybody knows the rules. I'll see y'all on Saturday. God bless you and good night.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I really want to celebrate and emphasize the hard work of all of your city council members. There are so many pressing issues before us as a community, and your city council members are taking different issues and moving the ball forward. And when Councilman Rutherford says that she's dropped the ball, she's been hardcore on Phoenix Place Apartments, but her point is that the job isn't done, and she's eager to make sure that there are real results. She has been very involved and very active, and to her point, we need to keep pressing that further. The city council is here to help, partner with her to make sure that that's a frontburner concern as a community and as a council. But, I mean, just tonight with what we talked about in the city council meeting, so many different issues, city council members have worked hard also leading up to tonight. I asked that council members research and ask questions of staff ahead of tonight so that way we didn't have a six-hour meeting, and we did it. It's only three hours, so hallelujah. We want to make sure that we're being thorough and precise, and when it comes, sometimes there'll be tough issues. We're just going to have to wait and take another week or two to keep getting it right. But I'm grateful to the hard work that council members did to make sure that this evening doesn't have to go until the next day, it doesn't go into past midnight. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Stop movement.
Is there a second?
Board.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Parker, to adjourn this evening's meeting. Hearing or discussion? Roll call adjournment. Clerk Doyle?
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Five VAs, no nays.
That motion carries. We stand adjourned at 9:04 p.m. Please be...